Thank you, welcome to the February 13th MAPC meeting, lucky number 13. Just as a quick reminder, you have less than 11 hours remaining for your Valentine shopping. So get out there after the meeting, hopefully we can get done quick. Quick trips are open 24 hours, so. Alright, with that, thank you all for being here. Let's start with opening announcements.
Before we begin the agenda, the Wichita Sedgwick County Metropolitan Area Planning Commission and the Wichita Sedgwick County Board of Zoning Appeals would like to take this opportunity to welcome everyone to this public hearing. For those in attendance, copies of the agenda for today's meeting, the public hearing procedure, and planning department staff reports on all agenda items are available in the lobby. The planning commissions and the BZAs bylaws limit the applicant on a zoning subdivision or variance application and his or her representatives to a total of 10 minutes of speaking time at the start of the hearing on that item, plus up to two minutes at the conclusion of that hearing. All other persons wishing to speak on agenda items are limited to three minutes per person. However, if they feel that it is needed and justified, the chairman may extend these times by up to two minutes. All speakers are requested to state his or her name and address for the record when beginning to speak. When you are finished speaking, please share your name, address, and the case number on the sheet provided in the room. This will enable staff to notify you if there are any additional proceedings concerning that item. All speakers at the podium, please remove your face mask before speaking into the microphone. Please note that all written and visual materials you present to the commission and the board will be retained by the secretary as part of the official record. If you are not speaking, but you wish to be notified about future proceedings on a particular case, please provide your contact information to the planning department. The planning commission and the board are interested in hearing the views of all persons who wish to express themselves on all the agenda items. However, we ask that all speakers please be as courteous and concise as possible and avoid long repetitions of facts or opinions which have already been stated. For your information, the Wichita City Council has adopted a policy for all city zoning items. A copy of this policy is available from the planning staff. The city council relies on a written record of the planning commission hearings and does not conduct its own additional public hearings on these items. The decision of the BZA is final. Any appeal of a decision of the BZA is to the district court.
Okay, item 1.2 is a roll call of members?
Yes, sir. Frye?
Present.
Mater?
Present.
McKay?
Present.
Duel?
Here.
Bill Johnson?
Present.
Blick?
Present.
Nix?
Here.
Cluntz?
Warren?
Present.
Joe Johnson?
Miles?
Here.
Simpelman?
Here.
Aldrich?
Here.
Williams Bay? Sir, I show all 14 members are present.
Alright, you-hoo, thank you. Next item 1.3 is approval of the MAPC meeting minutes from January 23rd. I show members Mater, Bill Johnson, Blick, and Nix were absent.
To approve.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Williams Bay and a second from Commissioner Aldrich. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Motion passes. Next item, we do not have BZA minutes or an agenda, so we'll move on to item 1.4, determination of the MAPC consent items. For the audience, this is where we will go through all of the items to see if we can hear just on consent without hearing the full case. So if you want to speak on one of these, this will be your moment. Item 2.1 is subdivision 2024-6, a final plat for courtyards at Jacobs Farm 2nd Edition. Any members of the commission want to hear this case? Seeing none, are there any members of the public that would like to hear this case? Seeing none, we'll move item 2.1 to consent. Item 2.2 subdivision 2025-1, this is a final plat for Blue Sky Crossing, West 87th Street South and South 119th Street West. Are there any members of the commission that would like to hear this case? Seeing none, are there any members of the public that would like to hear this case? Seeing none, we'll move item 2.2 to consent. Item 2.3 subdivision 2025-2, one stat final plat for Baker Family Subdivision, North 343rd Street West and West 21st Street North. Are there any members of the commission that would like to hear this case? Seeing none, are there any members of the public that would like to hear this case? Seeing none, we'll move item 2.3 to consent. Item 2.4 has been deferred to February 27th of this year. Item 2.5 subdivision 25, 2025-4, one final plat for Northeast Subyard, K-96 Highway and North Hillside Avenue. Are there any members of the commission who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, are there any members of the public who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, we'll move item 2.5 to consent.
Mr. Chairman?
Item 2.6 has been deferred to February 27th, 2025.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move for 2.1, 2.2, 2.3, 2.5 for approval.
We have a motion to move items 2.1, 2.2, 2.3, and 2.5 to consent by Commissioner Joe Johnson and a second by Commissioner Blick. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Now, we'll do the same for vacation items. Item 3.1, we will hear that because the recommended action is for denial. That is vacation 2024-57. Item 3.2 is vacation 2024-63. This is South Hydraulic Avenue and East 63rd Street South. Are there any members of the commission that would like to hear this case? Seeing none, are there any members of the public who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, we'll move item 3.2 to consent. Have a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Warren with a second by Commissioner Miles. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Public hearing items. Item 4.1 consent 2024-270, staff recommendation is to deny, so we will be hearing that case. Item 4.2 conditional use 2024-271, staff recommendation is to deny, so we will be hearing that case as well. Item 4.3 conditional use 2025-1 for vehicle and equipment sales, East Mount Vernon Road and South Grove Street. Are there any members of the commission who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, are there any members of the public who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, we'll move item 4.3 to consent. Item 4.4, I'm sorry, so that is... But we do have to hear items 4.4 and 4.5 anyway, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, I need a motion to move item 4.3 for approval to consent. We have a motion by Commissioner Miles and a second by Commissioner Williams Bay to move item 4.3 for approval on consent. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, so now we will back up. And the first case we're hearing should be item 3.1, vacation 2024-57. With that, Phillip?
Yes. Good afternoon, Planning Commission, Phillip Zievenbergen with Planning Staff. Vacation 2457 is a request to vacate a portion of the South McLean Boulevard right-of-way, which was a former Midland Valley Railroad right-of-way located south of West 47th Street and about halfway between South Seneca and South Broadway Avenue. The applicant owns both sides, and that meaning this property here as well as this triangular-shaped property here. These are the only two properties that had dedicated right-of-way for the railroad and now South McLean Boulevard. This property here is unplanted, and this platted property here was planted afterwards and did not dedicate any additional right-of-way, and so all reversion rights to the right-of-way in question would be this lot here and this property here. The properties are under common ownership, if you go to the aerial image, the property on the east side is developed as a red guard facility. They wish to expand over to the west for future expansion of their business, and they would like to vacate the right-of-way in order to accommodate that expansion. As you can see on the aerial, the right-of-way is not developed at all. It has been fenced off in the past at some point in time. The major sticking point with this application is that, if you go to the bikeway slides, please, is that the Wichita Bicycle Master Plan identifies a future bikeway through this area using the railroad right-of-way. This is a zoomed-in version showing the possible alignment of the path coming up, and if you go to the next one, this bikeway is part of, would be part of a larger corridor that essentially would connect OJ Watson Park down into Hayesville at some point in time in the future. It has been part of the bike and pedestrian master plan for some time. At times, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board has recommended this to be a priority. However, the current plan as well as the current capital improvement program don't necessarily identify as a priority at this time. However, the capital improvement program for the city does allocate $6.8 million for bikeways and bike improvements, but that does not identify specific projects. So even though it doesn't have any specific funding identified, there could be the possibility of funding being shifted to it. However, the current priority bikeways seem to be closer to the core of the city of Wichita. That being said, planning staff worked with other departments with both Public Works and Utilities as well as Park and Recreation and discussed this holistically and decided it would be better to not recommend approval of the vacation of the right-of-way. It is the only undeveloped or un... The only railroad right-of-way that is not currently used as a railroad in South Wichita that could accommodate an off-street bike facility such as this. Other examples of these type of facilities in Wichita are the Prairie Sunset Trail on the west side as well as the Red Bud Trail that goes through downtown out to the east. That essentially allows for the construction of the bikeway to be easily, more easily constructed because the land is already there, the city already owns the land and can construct the bikeway in segments, knowing there would have to be bridge crossings and things like that. Other things that you see on this map here are potential on-street facilities, and though that could accommodate future traffic, there is just a difference in quality when you have an off-street facility versus an on-street facility. Knowing the on-street facility are typically on arterial roads that are four lanes and carry a large amount of traffic. This was reviewed by the subdivision and utility advisory committee last week, and the recommendation from that committee as well was to recommend denial. So they agreed with the staff recommendation for this. There has not been public opposition to this. The applicant is not in favor of that recommendation. They do wish to have it vacated so that they can utilize their two sides of the property the way they wish without having to cross the right-of-way. They would wish it to become their own. In your staff report, there are conditions of approval should the planning commission want to recommend approval today. Two highlights on those, one is a water easement. The Public Works and Utilities Department identified the possible need to extend water to unplanted properties here. That sounds like it could be worked out in other ways, knowing that there are several of these lots that are unplanted or properties that are unplanted are under common ownership, and if they do plat and develop, there could be the possibility of extension of water from other places. The water easement wouldn't necessarily have to be in the right-of-way. Public Works and Utilities would be okay with it being extended from other points as well. The one I also want to talk about is, we talked with the applicant, this isn't necessarily something that they agreed to at the subdivision committee, they were requesting approval of the vacation without any easements, but staff discussed possibly having an easement on the southern portion of the right-of-way and then skirting around the property as to not disrupt the operations that they're intending to do on this site. Again, their discussion, and they'll probably talk about it today, is to possibly not have any type of easement on the property if it were to be approved. Again, staff's preferred recommendation would be to deny and not vacate it at all, and that was what the subdivision and utility advisory committee also recommended to this body today. And with that, I can stand for any questions.
Thank you, Phillip. Any members of the commission have questions for staff? Commissioner Aldrich?
Phillip, pertaining to just this property here, where the old men in line used to be, when exactly will that be the plan, the bicycle path plan to be developed as?
There's no intended construction date at this time, nor is there any specified funding sources.
And... Like you stated correctly on the staff report, that according to the master plan, this is not a priority.
Not in the current version, that was recently adopted by the city council.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Warren?
Phillip, I'm curious, don't know if you have this information with you, but other areas of town where the hiking paths have been put in, do we know how much they're used? What kind of activity do we have on them, or are we talking?
I'm going to defer to Scott on this to see if he has any information off the top of his head, he would be a more likely source of that information.
There are annual point-in-time counts that are conducted by the WAMPO. We can collect that, we don't have that data ready for this presentation, but we can certainly bring that back to you at some point. We also, there's also four counters that were installed by the city of Wichita, but I don't think that those are regularly monitored in terms of the data being collected. Anecdotally, I can tell you that there are differences in use at different times of day, different times of year. I think that the Red Bud out east is probably one of the more popular paths that Wichita has, and I just mentioned that anecdotally from riding on it, sometimes it gets so congested you can't ride very fast on it because there's so many people using it. The Prairie Sunset Trail, I think, is much less used in terms of volume, but I know that there's dedicated folks who are out there quite a bit using it in a volunteer group that's actually helps to maintain it in terms of tree trimming.
Commissioner Williams Bay?
Phillip, were there further discussions with the applicant about the alternative route that you discussed with them earlier?
We did meet with them prior to the subdivision and utility advisory committee and offered that as an alternative. Again, I can't speak for them, but at the subdivision committee last week, their preference was to have no easements. In the discussion at the meeting last week, the discussion was essentially, you know, offering, well, it could shift essentially over to Seneca and come back around and be on-street at this location and then continue north in the other corridor that is designated for this bikeway to continue. So that's what the discussion was last week from the applicant's perspective, and I'm sure they will reiterate that today.
But you didn't have further discussions with them after our meeting?
When it came to, when it came to the initial discussion, we offered the idea of, well, you know, once we understood a little bit more of how they wanted to utilize this, we realized something going straight through the middle was probably not ideal if they did develop both sides and want to cross it and get permission to cross it. And so that's where we offered up the idea of going around it. After the planning commission meeting, though, there was not any additional conversation.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bill Johnson?
Yes, so this bicycle path, if it's ever built, is to go to Hayesville. Is there a bicycle path planned in Hayesville or anything approved in the city of Hayesville?
I'm not aware of that, however, throughout this process, we did get correspondence from the city of Hayesville supporting the connection between Wichita and Hayesville, supporting the idea of creating this corridor. Thank you.
I think Commissioner Aldrich had another question.
Yeah, I, and I don't know if this would be for Phillip or Scott, but it would be nice to know how many, how much dollars have been spent on the bike path in general, the plan, the actual path, everything else, and compare that to how many actual users are using it, so you can figure out per user, how much is this costing for bike path mile? Is there any way we can get those numbers?
We can explore that. I don't, since the network has been built up over time, what we've done in the past is used a rough approximate estimate, and top of mind is that the, as a percentage of our overall transportation funding, it's much less than 10% of our spending when you think about roads, highways, bridges, and bike paths, and that it approximates, maybe even might have better statistics in terms of use per dollar based on modes of transportation and people used to get to work, but that's, again, just off the top of my head from research that we did years ago. If you want something more recent, we can certainly work towards providing that for advanced plans.
What I'm sort of getting at here, and I'm just going to throw out some numbers here, but if we spend $5 million, for example, on the bike path itself, not just the plan but also the actual path, how many people do we have on a monthly basis, an annual basis utilizing, you know, these paths? I mean, is it doing it just for maybe a half a percent of the population or what? I've always been curious, because I've asked that in the past, years ago and stuff, and never, never received any, any information back on it, so I've always been curious on that.
Commissioner Nix?
Was the $6.1 million figure that was thrown out, is that for this year, this calendar year? What is, what is that number?
It's the current capital improvement program, which is 2023 to 2032, I'm sorry, 25, sorry, 2025 to 2034 capital improvement program. So over the 10-year of the CIP, there's $6.8 million allocated.
That's for bikes and pathways across the city, just not this one.
But, but this one's not, this area right here is not a priority. We said that as well, did we not? I mean, it's still...
Yes, not at this time, it was not identified as a priority. In the past, it has been a priority bikeway that the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board has sent to the city council for consideration.
Well, I don't know whether that's a lot of money or a little money for, it kind of reminds me of the Northwest Expressway a little bit. When I think about it, I mean, is it, is it going to happen anytime in the next 10 years, 20 years? Is it enough money? Is it too little money? I'm kind of like Bob, I mean, I have no idea what that number even means.
And I don't know that we can provide you with any certainty on that either, because in the past, the Wichita CIP has identified which bikeway projects were to be funded with the 10-year allocation that was programmed in the CIP. However, I think in the last two years, the most recent CIPs have not identified that. So as Phillip indicated, it's a lump sum of that, you know, $6 million, and we do not know specifically which ones it's allocated for, programmed for in the future.
See, Commissioner Mater, do you still have your hand up? No? Okay. Commissioner Warren, did you have a follow-up question?
Yes, I do. Phillip, if money was not a problem and we decided that we wanted to develop this piece of land for a hike and bike path, how far would it have to go in either direction to connect with the existing hike and bike path?
Can you go to the zoomed-out bikeway? And Scott, I'm going to lean on you as well of what on the map is constructed. Go to the next one. So as a perspective, this is the subject part of the planned corridor. I can tell you that this segment is not constructed. Scott, this is, I, I'm going to lean on you in terms of, other than on-street facilities, especially to the north.
My recollection and my understanding is that probably the nearest bikeway that's constructed, it would be the Arkansas River Path, which is up by OJ Watson Park, which is approximately one, two and a half miles, maybe three miles, depending on how you count it, to the north.
Some of staff's perspective is, this essentially becomes like a middle chink in the chain, where the likelihood of future development encroaching on possibly other portions of this bikeway to the north and to the south are significantly less likely to where if, if this middle part goes away, how it could possibly jeopardize the entire corridor. When it's been a priority of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board for several years, even though there's no specified identification for it, it is the only rail corridor in the south that could promote an off-street facility like we have in other parts of Wichita, and this is the center link of the chain when it comes to the future viability of actually constructing that corridor, even though, even if it's not a priority at this time.
So as a quick follow-up to that, in terms of north-south corridors that are nearby that are not on-street bike lanes, is there, does anything exist?
Go ahead. In terms of north-south corridors that are not on the street, there is another dash line that's shown on this, and it curves a little bit, it actually intersects with this and then continues in a southeasterly direction, kind of almost hugging 235 there for a portion. It's actually along a drainage canal, and I don't know that the viability of that has ever been investigated. It may be another situation where, like the big ditch, there may not be the rights to be able to access that. So to my knowledge, this is the only north-south corridor where the city has the rights to develop it as a, as a bikeway, and it's got the space and the feasibility.
Without having to acquire property or do anything else?
Now, there are things to highlight here in that this does, just south of this property and the location we're talking about, it does cross an active railroad corridor, and that is a very active railroad corridor. And again, there's been, this, this question is coming to you about this vacation before any design work has been done on this corridor. So if there is a solution for that, what that solution might be, what the cost might be, we don't know, we really don't know any of that. I can tell you in terms of cause, that we did, the furthest this has gone with study is that we have had this corridor tested for contamination. We found on the Red Bud, for instance, that it was contaminated, soils were contaminated from the former railroad use, so it has to, portions of it have to be capped, or at least that, there needs to be mitigation in some form or fashion. On this corridor, when we did the testing, we found there was no contamination. So this one could be developed as a chipped rock trail, similar to what you say with the Prairie Sunset Trail. That impacts cost because you're not pouring as much pavement, but... But the thing to keep in mind is you have the active railroad corridor and you have, uh, arterial roadways that you have to cross. And so those crossings, you know, signalization are expensive and you got to coordinate where those go.
Did I say, Mr. Mater, Commissioner Mater?
Looking at this map, uh, talking of, about the easements. So the city has the right through all of this property today.
That is correct.
What we'd be doing if we approved this today would be taking a chunk out of the middle of it.
You would take, they have, at least from here, all the way up to here, this becomes shared with right of way, is my understanding. But at least this mile is, the city has the right to, and at least the mile that we're in and possibly even farther south.
Just to add a little bit to that, um, apparently it's our understanding from City Wichita Property Management that this corridor was acquired back in the eighties through a condemnation case. So that's how the city has access to it. It's not, it's not been rail banked. It's, it, it, we don't have partial control that it was done through that condemnation case.
Okay, Commissioner Williams, back.
Is that used for, as a walking path today or is it not used at all?
If you go to the aerial, you can see it's, uh, overgrown in places. There's, there's trees there, there's actually a fence on 47th Street. But it's, there's no identified walking path or trail at this point, no.
Okay, is that, any more questions? Commissioner Zimbalman.
Um, Scott, you correct me if I'm wrong, but at the subdivision committee, the reason we denied this is because we got an email from the Bike Wichita people that basically said they wanted to withdraw their, comments about it, is that correct? So they were happy with the way you redid the staff report. And I don't think they have an objection anymore. And that's why we, they basically wanted to deny, wanted us to deny it, which we did.
I think that's correct. If I understand correctly from their communications, that their perspective is that they would like to see the vacation denied or at least the corridor preserved.
And their email that Mr. Zimbalman is referencing is in your guys' staff report.
Uh, Commissioner Blick, did I see your hand up?
I just want to make a correction. North of 47th Street is actually active. People use that, there's a path that goes around there, goes all the way up. The residents in that area and south of this area that we're talking about, it is very active off-road, um, dirt bike, uh, bicycle, off-road bicycle, everything back in that area. And I know for sure, because I get reports almost every single month of people that are down in that area. So it is very active in this area.
Any other commissioner? Commissioner Warren.
Get reports in, in the form of a complaint?
From the Neighborhood Association, I've been the president for 20 years in this area. And their biggest, their biggest complaint down in the, in the far, far corner, there's off-road, um, hills that are not on this trail, but it's actually further south. Um, it's been going on for 50 years down in there and it's just the sound of four-wheelers jumping and stuff. Um, but further north, um, right where 47th Street is, the reason why people can't continue with the bike or walk is there's a barbed wire fence and that, that's right there and it blocks that access. So people have been just staying away from south, but everything north, they walk up and down. You'll see people that were, um, there was a Royal Caribbean that was right over there and those people at lunchtime walk up and down that path and everything.
Commissioner Joe Johnson.
Scott, I know how much of a bank, I'm a bike enthusiast, you are. But when I heard you talk about it, it seemed like there were a lot of impediments going south from here that might be financially hard to solve in the future. Is that fair?
I don't, I guess, I want to make sure, because of my background in working on bike pad projects, I want to make sure that you can feel confident that you're getting a fair representation of both what the advantages and what the challenges are from me. So I, I want to make sure that no one walks away from this thinking that, well, Scott Wade was trying to sell us on this. Besides, uh, pointing out that, uh, this is official policy, right? That this should be a bike path. And so that's what we've based our recommendation on. And we always look to you all, we do the best shot we can, do the best we can with the policies and the plans and the information that we have. And then we present what we think that is representing for future guidance to you. But, but in pointing out some of the, the cost challenges and things to be aware of, it's not to say that this is impossible because there are trails and different paths where these have been overcome. Maybe the obstacles have been a little bit different than this one, but it is, I, I believe that it's still possible. But I don't know how that would happen because we've not done the design work. But I think it's important for you to realize that there are challenges and that there may, you know, there are challenges and there are advantages and there's, there's trade offs to all of those. So I'm trying to be just accurate and fairly neutral in how I represent it. I just don't want you to think that, well, this is a shoe and easy peasy, we can totally do this or that it's insurmountable and impossible because it's somewhere in the middle.
I'll be anxious to hear the owners talk about their investment on the east side and what they're trying to do on the west side.
Seeing no more commissioners with hands raised, we'll ask the applicant and agent to come forward. You will have, uh, 10 minutes and please give us your name and address for the record.
Um, Jay Cook, Baughman Company, 315 South Ellis. Agent on behalf of the applicant, I do have a couple, um, I have Adam Tannahill here and Ryan Mills from Lang, who are the owners of these properties here. If there's any questions that I can't answer, I just want to state that. So what we have is, uh, as Philip stated, we have Red Guard existing. Red Guard is looking for, or looking to have a $20 million growth expansion investment on the Red Guard campus that comes south, goes over to the west and even up in the north buildings they own, uh, north of 47th Street. Um, Red Guard is a company that creates, they, they produce, manufacture blast proof portable offices and other, other things that like that. So their, their work is with relatively heavy equipment, heavy items, things like that. And speaking with the CEO of, of Red Guard, who couldn't be here today because he's in, uh, traveling for meetings and whatnot, the, the use of this west path is for storage and, and parking as well as moving, um, these blast proof offices back and forth as they're being manufactured. And one of, and I say that because one of the main issues that we have with the shared path through the middle is safety. These will be, uh, very heavy equipment, forklifts, heavy equipment on the, on the actual offices that are being moved around. And, and we worry about the possibility of that impediment of safety on people that would ride their bikes through here. Before I go any farther, we don't have any issue granting water easement from this area in the easement up to make sure this has that, just so you all are aware of that. Let me get that out of the way before I continue. Um, so this is a $20 million investment that Red Guard wants to do. When we applied for this vacation, we didn't think there'd be any issue. It wasn't until, um, the first subdivision committee hearing we had that we realized that there was a, the bike path was, was a proposed bike path to come through here. And that's kind of slowed this process down quite a bit. As far as Red Guard goes, we're ready to go ahead and invest now and, and start building, breaking ground now. One of the issues we have is Red Guard contracts with the Department of Defense. So this has to be a very secure site for what they're doing. And as we've talked through with planning staff, with Scott, who was gracious enough to give us a chance to sit down and try to find alternatives, in the end, it becomes an issue of liability, an issue of safety and security. And, and for the development as a whole, we're concerned with the safety of, of pedestrians, as I've stated, and also the safety and security of our facility and, and producing what we have. This $20 million investment will have an increase of, of 100 new employees into the south Wichita area. We think it's a great thing. As far as economic development goes, I was at a city council meeting a couple of weeks ago. Uh, and it's great to see Ms. Tuttle here. Don't normally see her at these meetings. But anyways, uh, Mayor Wu was discussing, uh, an award for the finance department and how well they did on the budget. And one of the things that I thought was interesting is that the finance department sent out questionnaires to the, the citizens of Wichita saying, what are your priorities? And economic development was in the top five of those priorities. I think it was second or third. And I don't know exactly where bike paths would have fallen. I know they're important and we're not saying they're not. But economic development seems to be a big issue and a, and a job creator seemed to be a big driver of the Wichita economy. And that's what we're trying to do. We, we entertained the idea, as, as Philip was saying, of providing a 20-foot easement along the south and then getting Le Cleed here, having the, uh, bike path continue up this way. But in speaking with Darren, the CEO, and, and with Lang, it, it's just not a feasible option with the development that we're doing. Just having unauthorized individuals onsite is, is not something they're looking for. So that's why we think that, um, if you go back to that overhead of the whole bike path, going around to Seneca is, is what we would think would be the best option for this. I don't have a, a whole lot more. I don't know if, if Adam, if you want to add to that, if you're good on that. But we, what we, I will say, what we are requesting is, is the initial request of vacating that easement. Uh, this helps. So you can see just kind of going up Seneca just for that one, uh, block, which is a four-lane road and then, and then meeting up again. Again, there's nothing developed to the south, there's nothing developed to the north yet. We're looking at investment now compared to a bike path that we don't know the future of. Uh, the bike plan that was mentioned had 6.1 or 6.8 million dollars in the CIP for that. But if you look at the actual bike plan they have, this is a low, um, low traffic, proposed low traffic area. And a lot of that money looked like it was going to be spent on the central business area. Uh, one thing I will say, if, if you, if you would go to approve, the alternative that, that planning staff has, has put forth, uh, number two, that 30-foot easement by separate instrument along the south portion, that's not something that we would be, we, we'd be willing to do. And we'd ask that that be taken off if approval is something you're willing to do for us. Um, number three, we would dedicate that, uh, water line. And we would get that done quickly if we could get this approval. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
Commissioner Aldrich.
How many employees does Red Guard presently have?
Red Guard presently has. Okay. All, all the, is it Lang Companies are all in Red Guard? 320.
What about this particular site?
This particular site has about, wait, I don't know the number.
No, okay, thank you.
Commissioner.
Actually, hold on one second. Ryan, this is Ryan Mills with Lang, he, he may have that, those numbers a lot.
Give you a little context. So the other part of this is that Mr. Lang has already invested and bought what was referred to as the old Royal Caribbean building previously, which is immediately on the north side of this, uh, subject property. They're across the street from what we call the PC building. So the PC is where a lot of the manufacturing takes place. We've been under planning for an advanced manufacturing facility for Red Guard to grow its capacity and capability here in the state of Kansas. Most of the client bases, was referenced earlier, is in the Petrochem Oil and Gas and Blast Resistant Product. Department of Defense, again, has reiterated the need for a highly secure facility in total with what is planned at the advanced manufacturing facility. And then what we call Portico Chase, the old Royal Caribbean building, there's currently about $8 million of investment that's taking place in the Portico Chase building. So when done, this would facilitate about a 30 to 35 million dollars of new investment and create what we anticipate to be around 80 to 120 new jobs, primarily manufacturing. But a lot of the jobs that are moving from Lang are also planned to be for the HQ, which is our planned headquarters for the Lang offices outside of the real estate company, which would be all of Red Guard and all the shared services. We would anticipate there to be at least probably 80, um, office type positions that would be relocating to the Portico Chase building. And there's, I think, about 60 to 70 manufacturing jobs that are happening at the PC expansion. Red Guard has facilities up and down West Street right now. I think has three or four other, uh, manufacturing facilities, including Chance Manufacturing Building here in town that Mr. Lang has as well. This is in an effort to consolidate those, create efficiencies and create some economies of scale and, and better produce product, uh, for the, for our clients and customers.
Okay.
This in no way is said with, the, the intent of Lang Companies is to always be a Kansas company. That's, um, Mr. Lang's approach from day one. It, it is important to note that Red Guard's customer base is not a Kansas base. So all of this manufacturing, all this job creation is exporting product to really other states and other, all across the world that is bringing revenue, jobs and all of those things into the, into the city of Wichita. So we see it as a priority for creating efficiency across that for the campus.
Okay, thank you. Also, uh, can you have your, announce your name and your, uh, address, please, for our records?
I'm sorry, Ryan Mills, 1101 West Douglas, Wichita, Kansas, 67213, with Lang Real Estate.
Commissioner Mater?
Yeah, I know you, we had talked earlier about making some kind of a provision for the bike path to go through. You said that's not going to work. At this point, what you're wanting is complete vacation of the easement and absolutely no incursion on your property in any way to make the bike path work. You can't give up 20 feet anywhere if you get that whole easement out of there?
Uh, that, and that was the discussion we had after we met with Scott and after we talked with, after we had, uh, our subdivision committee meeting last week was, um, the issues we have with that 20 feet that you're talking about or 30 feet on the south, as staff has recommended, is that, is the safety of the facility of the site? So we would be asking for a vacation of all that area you see there in black.
I thought you said it was all going to be fenced last, at subdivision. You had mentioned all that would be fenced, it'd be inside a fenced area. Can the fence not move in 20 or 30 feet?
Well, that's.
Accommodate for what the city would be giving you here?
So the, so the issue with that is if, if someone were to, if we did have that easement, someone were to get injured on that, on that site within that 20 feet, whose responsibility is that? Does that fall on Red Guard? Does that affect Red Guard's contracts with the DOD and other things like that if they're not securing their site completely?
Well, could you just deed it to the city then so you wouldn't be responsible? I mean, it just seems to me like you're asking a lot and giving nothing because you're saying we're going to do jobs. Does this mean there will be no jobs if you don't get this easement? Uh, I, I guess I don't quite understand it. We're getting all the buzzwords but no answers.
It, it could have impact on the level of investment that happens in Wichita, Kansas. Yes, I think that's a fair statement to make. There would still be a presence and job continued creation here, but it would, uh, slow it down and.
So I'm curious, what, what investment is Red Guard going to make in the quality of life in South Wichita? As a South Wychetan, I would, I'd like to know that because it seems like you're asking for us to give up a quality of life project in South Wichita that South Wichita tends to have their projects pushed back and pushed back and pushed back and pushed back. And now you're asking us to compromise just because you're not willing to give up 20 feet?
Well, the, the quality of life, the investment would be on, on an economical side of, of, of the 100 jobs that Ryan mentioned. As far as the, the, what we're giving up, I don't, you know, we've got no issues with, with bike paths. This isn't the, the big bad manufacturer saying no bike paths. But what we're wanting to, to state is this is a $20 million investment, jobs being created right now as opposed to a bike path that could be 10, 20, 30, 40 years down the road that we don't know. And that's not to say that South Wichita doesn't deserve to have the same amenities as the east and the, and the west side of Wichita with these other bike trails. But that is to say is we're trying to balance economic development. we're trying to balance economic development with that proposal of a bike path that has no future in sight.
So is there a guarantee that if those jobs come, that the people that are going to be employed in those jobs will be people from South Wichita?
I don't know that you can determine whether or not someone that you employ is going to be from Wichita at all. What you can prove is that they'll be using the economy around Seneca. They'll be going to restaurants around this area on their lunch breaks. They'll be putting money into South Wichita for those properties or those business owners.
Commissioner Blake?
Hey, Jay. Do you see where that arrow is right there? This board actually approved seventy brand-new home development that's right there in that area. That whole area, there's seventy brand-new homes in the last two years. The property to the north has been projected by the developer from the south that, hey, there's possibility we're going to purchase all that land and build new homes in that area. That's the only new development of homes in that area within probably a three-to-four-mile radius of within that area. So when we talk about quality of life, of somebody that is now right into that area and new homes start growing even more in there, we're now talking about a safety thing being too close to your guys' property line, where right now, if you look on Forty-seventh, where you're proposing that west location, there's actually a house, a church, and a bunch of other residential property that's right there. Is that going to be too close and be more of a safety? Or are we just talking about the corridor in between where the easements that you're wanting?
Well, the immediate safety thing that I was trying to state there would be the traffic back and forth with heavy machinery and that with actual people on the bike path. There would be no safety issues as far as air pollution, chemical, anything like that that would affect anybody on this side. It would literally just, we don't want to share this, but that doesn't sound good. We don't want anyone to be injured in this because of the development that we have and the way we are going to utilize this.
And I could be wrong, and maybe our chairman can explain this on parks and wrecks. And if you fall down or you get injured or something, who's responsible? I mean, this would be this exact same thing, wouldn't it, that this would be a park or wreck type of thing where it's owned by the city? So I don't know if it's who's the blame or what, but maybe you can help answer that question with parks and wrecks.
City property, it's protected by the city, so.
And just, Ryan Mills, to answer, to kind of hit both of your guys' points, Lang has been, I think, the utmost leader in investing in South Wichita in quality-of-life-related projects in South Wichita. We see evidence of that, of the Iron Horse Development, which is fairly well-stabilized now, the redevelopment of Forty-seventh and Broadway, where the old Kmart facility was, and all of the activation of the retail and that there. We developed this subject property that you're referencing, sir, for the housing over the last year and a half, two years, have completed that kind of in the last year. Very proud and excited about that and what that brought to the area. We will continue to be a proponent of South Wichita in bringing quality-of-life deliverables there. I think to date, Mr. Lang and the REIT have invested north of eighty million dollars into South Wichita specifically, so that is planned to continue.
Thank you. Just a quick question on that. So do you think it's better to have bike paths in the streets instead of off of, like this rail, the trails, the rail corridor?
My, I'm not a bike path expert by any means. In this corridor, given the manufacturing presence, given the number of other factors and logistically how this actually gets implemented and built, yes, I think that this would be better served on street. I don't think that this activates economic development. I don't think that it further activates residential growth as you go to the south. When we developed that vacant, what is duplex and single-family lots, to your motorcycles and ATVs, I think I called the police two or three different times that there were stolen ATVs and motorcycles and stuff stored back there. The police department was very helpful, but they take off on this trail and they can't be caught. They can't be found. There's different types of uses happening back there historically. I think a lot of that started to be cleaned up with this housing project. And Jeff owns about sixteen acres to the south of the existing PC expansion, notated in that triangle. So it creates a good buffer area to where there's, I think, separation between the manufacturing and housing, et cetera.
Commissioner Mater?
Back again to trying to work out with what staff had suggested could work. So I agree with you. What Lang has done for South Wichita and for Wichita in general is just tremendous. It's amazing, and I'm always impressed with it. I'd be really impressed if you could dedicate thirty feet out of this development. It's a large development, and if you could come up with the thirty feet, then we could give the easement with absolutely no problem. It wouldn't change the bike path much. And somebody who rides bike paths a lot, it's way better than the street. There's no comparison.
Any other comments from commissioners? Jay, do we know who owns the lot south of Lang Fourth Edition there?
This lot, I know the name. They also, if you'll, I don't know if you got it any further. They own all the way to Seneca, all four of these lots. I don't know, yeah, so they own this mobile home park, all that. I don't know the name of the company. I did at one time, but...
It's El Cadillo LLC.
Okay.
I think they're out of Detroit. They own the mobile home park that's right there along.
Right, they own here and all four of those. And as far as their development goes, I have no idea what their future plans are.
And your main concern on the south portion of that fourth edition, again, is you're going to fence that all off, but connecting the bike path over to La Cleed on that south portion. Your concern with that not being an option is what?
With...
Connecting from there across over to La Cleed.
But it's just full security of the site.
Full security is going to be fenced, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from the commission? All right, gentlemen, please stand by. We'll have a chance for rebuttal here. Anyone like to speak on this item? Please come forward. Give us your name and address. You'll have up to three minutes.
Hi there. I'm Alan Kayler with BikeWalk Wichita, three twenty-five North St. Francis. And I'm going to ask you to support the staff recommendation and this subdivision committee vote to deny this. I've sent an email giving in detail what the status of the various government actions on it is, and I'm not going to repeat that. I'm going to try to address some of the questions that have been asked, but I may well need some more time because there are a lot of questions. We're not trying to put the company out of business or to prevent them from expanding or using this property. I think the real issue here, frankly, as has been discussed quite a bit already, is that the applicant has been completely unwilling to consider any compromise whatsoever, but at the same time wants to get this property deeded over to it for free. And, you know, there are lots of reasonable compromises that are possible here, but they've refused to discuss anything. A couple of things. First of all, this is not a unique situation. The city already has some other situations like this. The most prominent example that I know of is the Prairie Sunset Trail just east of Tyler that goes through the Learjet property. That has worked very well. The city owns that property, gives an easement to Learjet to cross back and forth between its properties, and has not been any problems. Frankly, I'm not sure why the applicant here has any more security or safety concerns than Learjet would. So, you know, that would certainly be a possibility. I've not heard any reasonable alternatives from the applicant or otherwise. They are suggesting using the Seneca Bike Way. In effect, they're asking the city to spend significantly more money on a longer route to and with more difficulty in order for them to get this easement given up or this property given up again for free. That is a possibility. It could be done. It is not nearly as attractive as a route, and as I said, it would require additional complications with the city. Third, I understand that it's taken a long time, that this route has been proposed for a long time and nothing yet has been done. You're probably more aware than most that things don't happen as fast as we would like, that things move at the speed of government here on the planning and construction. But there are reasons for this and reasons for hope that it will move more quickly. It was not included in the newly adopted bike plan of the city because the consultants on that were specifically advised that WAMPO is working on a separate regional active transportation plan that would address the interregional connections. And in fact, the regional, WAMPO is working on that plan, and one of the main focuses on it will be to connect with other communities and...
Alan, I can give you one more minute.
So, and WAMPO will begin work on that. That work was put on hold while the Wichita Plan was being developed, and now will begin working on that. And that is one of the highest priorities in the regional plan. So for all those reasons, I ask you to deny this request, just to answer a couple of the questions real quickly. For example, on the Prairie Sunset Trail, a question was asked about the traffic on the trails. The Prairie Sunset Trail, for example, has a twenty-four-hundred average daily traffic, according to the WAMPO count. That's the closest trail to this one. And Hayesville already has an extensive bike network, and part of their active transportation plan includes the plan for a connection to Wichita. So it is, again, very much at the forefront of their intention, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Any questions for our speaker? Mr. Commissioner Blake?
Hey, Alan. To my knowledge, there's only one bike route right now. It's using street access through residential neighborhoods, and then it goes up and connects to downtown Wichita. Is it fair a session to say that over the last probably fifteen years, it's been, most of the bicycle maskover plan has been directed to east Wichita, west Wichita, and downtown Wichita with those plans?
Well, yeah, absolutely. If you look at a map of Wichita showing the various, you know, pull up Google Maps even and show where, see where the green lines are on the bikeways. The southwest area of Wichita definitely has many fewer bike facilities than the rest of the city. Really, the only significant one in that area, as I mentioned, is the Prairie Sunset Trail.
Any other questions? Saying none, thank you, Alan. Any other public like to speak on this item? Going once? Going twice? All right, now we'll have the applicant come back for rebuttal. You'll have up to two minutes, please.
I'm not going to rebut anything that you say. I mean, it's all factually accurate. I know he's passionate about what he does, and I respect that and appreciate it. I'll just reiterate that there's a lot of unknowns with traffic. I realize that other trails have significant traffic, bike traffic. This is, like I said, and I'm going to restate it again, this is investment now into the community as opposed to when does this get done? And the last thing I'll leave you with is, I think I speak for everyone when I say that we're upset that there's no cake and ice cream for Mr. Zievenberg's trip around the sun. I want on the record that it's his birthday today, so pinch his cheeks, tell him happy birthday, and that's all I got.
Any questions for the applicant agent? Saying none, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion. Commissioner McKay?
I'd like to speak to Commissioner Zimmerman. He's chairman of the subdivision committee. Would you please repeat what you said, why you voted, the group voted the way they did?
I don't think it's working.
The staff received an email from the Bike Wichita people saying that as they had rewritten the staff report, they were in agreement with it. And the email basically said they were withdrawing their objection to the original request. So as Scott and I discussed before, they basically wanted us to deny it so it would go back the way it was, or basically leave it the way it was. And so we had hardly any argument at all. They said if they wanted to deny it, deny it. But I have an additional question. If we end up, the easement stays there, can they not, since they own both properties, can they not fence across it until the bike people want to propose this path?
If it remains the way that it is today, it actually is city property, and so they would not be able to put a fence across it unless they received some special permission or provision from the city, sometimes a use of right-of-way permit or something similar. And there are fences there, but I would suggest that they're not legally there right now. And it's not because of anything that Lang or anyone has done. I believe those fences have been there for many, many decades, so.
Commissioner Aldrich?
You know, it seems to me that on the bike path, especially when this is not a priority when it comes to the master bike plan, it could be another twenty-five-plus years. And if this ever gets completed on the bike path through there, by then I think they can be looking at some alternative deals. But, you know, you mentioned about the quality of life right there. Well, right now, the only quality of life is probably wildlife because there's no people going in there because it's not developed for a bike path right now. And again, I don't foresee this ever happening. You know, I've served on the park board at one time, years ago, when the rails, trails, and the bike plant tryst started coming up. That was twenty-five years ago. And, you know, here, we're looking at a twenty-plus-million-dollar investment into the city, which is going to expand the tax base and bring a lot more revenues in than having a section right here of the bike trail. So I would like to make a motion that we approve based on the alternative staff recommendations, with the exception of striking recommendation number two.
Second? So the motion is to approve?
Yeah.
First, staff recommended approval minus item two.
Right, that's on the alternative to approve the request.
And we had a second from Commissioner Warren. I'll get to you, Commissioner Warren, correct? Okay, so we have a motion that's been properly seconded, and a discussion. Commissioner Mater?
I'm bothered by the city giving up an easement and getting nothing in return. All we need is thirty feet down one side, and we could do it the staff has suggested, and they are absolutely refusing to compromise, and that bothers me. It's like building a building and then coming in and asking for permission. And that's never made us very happy. The, this easement was there when they bought the property. We hear that all the time. Well, didn't you know that that field would be developed? This easement's been there. All I think we really need is if they could help out with thirty feet outside the fence, that would be no problem other than kind of flipping their thirty feet for this easement. Right now, they have no rights to the easement because it's city property. And if they want to get that property released from the city, why can't they give up thirty feet? And if they'd be willing to do that, I'd support, I'd rather support the staff suggestion.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but when it comes to the railroad lines and stuff, with that property, when a railroad is abandoned, whether it's a short line, regional or whatever, that's supposed to go back to the property owners and the city acquired it by kind of nation. So it never went back to the original property owner, so the city's never utilized it for anything.
Okay, we're going to go to Commissioner Warren, I think, and then Commissioner Williams Bay, then Commissioner Bill Johnson.
Mr. Aldrich stated one of my points. None of these properties should go back to the landowners that gave it up when the easement came through originally. landowners that gave it up when the easement came through originally. So I won't go on that one. But the other one, question I had, or the comments I want to make, has to do with quality of life issues. Whenever bike paths and things like that come along and they start coming in behind existing neighborhoods, quite often you have neighborhoods in an upper world, I don't want strangers hanging around my backyard. And that's something that will be coming up. If this goes forward 10 years from now, 20 years now, 30 years from now, I can guarantee you that there'll be neighbors and neighborhoods saying, I don't want that in my backyard. And so, you know, even if we save the easement, is the possibility be that the bike path will not come through because we're not been down that road? Then we will have to go down that road.
Commissioner Williams Bay.
Yeah, I'd like a clarification. Are we talking about the possibility of the 30-foot on the south end, Mr. Mater?
But, of the south property line?
I believe it's covered in their item number two in the alternative suggestions.
So for clarification, item number two actually calls for a 30-foot easement on the southwest and north property lines of that lot, not just the south.
Right. You could bring up the vacation slide.
It would include an easement coming up the south part of the right-of-way and then you would have a full square, you know, to the west, north. And so it's not, it's assuming that they would get 30, that, the recommendation is that 30 feet would be retained on three sides of that lot and not just the south.
So we wouldn't be moving anything to the streets then? It wouldn't go to either straight right-of-way state?
That is correct.
Oh, okay.
It would not be utilizing street right-of-way.
Do we know if they'd be willing to accept if it just went down one side, will you street right-of-way? I don't, I guess I'm having a real hard problem with this. We'll give you nothing.
Commissioner Bill Johnson.
I guess what I want to state, I've been on this commission, I think, not as long as John, so he's a whole lot more experienced than I am, but 25 years or better. This isn't the first easement we have give up to a property owner. We've seen lots of cases where somebody's bought, built, grew, needed to expand, and we vacated easement. So it's not the first time this has happened.
I think giving up an easement.
Commissioner Miles.
Giving up an easement is one thing, but if we give up this easement, we're going to give up the fact that we would have any chance of building or expanding this bike path into South Wichita.
You know, basically it could go down 47th Street to Seneca and South, so.
On a busy street.
I mean, half of Seneca doesn't even have sidewalks down through the side. I make a substitute motion for denial based off the fact that this is a plan that's in place. Its funding has been redirected out of this area by city council members prior to other projects. So this project could happen in 20 years, it could happen next year. We don't know for sure. But when we just go ahead and cut out the middle link of it right in the center, then I see that there's a possibility that connection to Hayesville, connection to downtown and in southwest Wichita is going to be jeopardized because of that. And if the applicant's not willing to budge at all and help out at all to be able to make sure that this future plan and quality of life and whatever else, then I see it's a denial in my case.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion to deny by Commissioner Blick with a second by Commissioner Mater. Before I vote and call for the vote, I'm gonna speak to it. So as previously you all know, I served on the Wichita City Council and there have been lots of projects that we have vacated easements for development to accomplish economic growth in our city. I'm a big proponent of that. I know we talked about the Lang investment in South Wichita and these are known quantities, known people. They have done amazing things in our community. And so that prospect of increasing employment and development in our community for this project should not be diminished at all. I also see the wisdom in quickest access is a straight line between two points. And having to jog around from the south end to the north end via Seneca or Le Cleed or whatever route is not ideal. But the city has had this property since 1980 and has done nothing with it. And there's been multiple opportunities to invest and make this a roadway or a bike path before the Langs acquired it. And nothing has been done. And so we can sit here and wait and continue and hope that the city invests in it, or we can move forward with an economic development opportunity. So for that reason, I'm gonna vote no, and I'm gonna call for a vote. All in favor of the denial, please say aye.
Aye.
A show of hands, please. Commissioners Blick, Commissioner Miles, Commissioner Mater, Commissioner Williams Bay. All against the denial, please raise your hand. And one, two, three, four, five. Are you getting all these names? Joe Johnson, Chuck Warren, Hugh Nix, Zimmerman.
Mr. Chair, could we have them announce the tally?
Okay, so in favor of it, raise your hands again so I can see, of the denial. Joe Johnson, oh, you just need the number?
I didn't need the number.
Of which? I thought we got the first one.
We can, okay, so those in favor, we've got Mater, Blick, Miles, and Williams Bay. And then against, we have Frye, McKay, Dool, Bill Johnson, Nix, Clontz, Zimmerman, and Apologies, yes, Joe Johnson.
So, and then all abstain?
Clontz is one abstention.
Okay. All right, so we got that record straight. So now I'll go back to the original motion, which was to approve via staff recommendations as the alternative action, minus item two. And we had a second for that. Okay. All in favor of that motion, please say aye or raise your hands. We have Commissioners Dool, McKay, Aldrich, Bill Johnson, Zimmerman, Nix, and Warren. No. I have not voted yet.
Oh.
No, that was the substitute motion. On this motion, all against, please raise your hand. Yeah, this is the against it. So Joe Johnson, or, yeah, Joe Johnson, Blick, Miles, Zimmerman, Williams Bay, and Frye. You're good. So what's the total? Do we still have an abstention as well? And we have one abstain.
So it'd be eight to five to one.
Eight, five, one, motion passes. Okay, next item, which is conditional use 2024-270.
Good afternoon, Planning Commission, Philip Zievenbergen with planning staff for the record. Conditional use 24-270 is a county conditional use for a private airstrip on property zone rural residential located on the southeast corner of West 39th Street South or MacArthur and South 391st Street West. This is, again, in unincorporated Sedgwick County, but it is in the city of Cheney's urban area of influence. Before getting into the details of the case, the city of Cheney Planning Commission did hear this case on January 27th. They recommended approval subject to the alternative conditions that are listed in your staff report. Citizens Advisory Board for County District Three heard this case on February 3rd. They also recommended approval subject to those same conditions with an additional one that would restrict the airstrip from ever being lit in order to permit landings or takeoffs at night. Staff recommendation is for denial. I'll get into the basis of that here in just a minute. The property overall is approximately 78 acres. There are two property owners. You have the larger property owner and then you have one property owner, Mr. Grace, who owns 10 acres in the southeast corner. He currently has a house there and they were recently approved for an accessory apartment. The property was approved in November for a plat, for the South Fork Air Park Edition, which create nine lots, counting the Grace lot. So the Grace's lot would be incorporated into the plat. If you want to go to the site plan or the plat, the plat dedicated an easement that goes down this rear property lines of all of the nine lots. And that easement is for the airstrip. If the conditional use is not approved, it does not affect the plat, the properties can still be developed residentially. They would just have an airstrip easement on the rear that they can't use and it could possibly be vacated in the future. The airstrip is proposed to be a grass strip. There is no common areas, there's no common area that would be owned by an HOA or anything like that. Again, all portions of the easement would be parts of private property as it centerlines on the rear lots of all of these proposed lots at this time. So you don't necessarily have a space where a plane could land taxi to a common parking area. There wouldn't be common areas for hangars or fuel storage or anything like that. Everything that would be developed would be on somebody's lot. It is important to note that because it's in rural residential, every single lot would have to have a house before it could construct a hangar. You couldn't just have one of the lots with a hangar on it because it's not a residential use. So any type of a hangar would have to be an accessory structure related to a house on that lot. The surrounding context, if you go to the zoning map, three sides of the, around the property are in Sedgwick County. It's all zone rural residential and it's a combination of large lot rural residential subdivisions or just rural residential property and agricultural fields. In the city of Cheney, you have three parcels that are directly to the north. You've got one zone R4, single-family residential and it's developed with a single-family residence. You have this middle parcel, that's a combination of agricultural district and planned commercial. It's an agricultural field at this time. And you have this parcel here, which is C2 planned commercial. It's an agricultural field and a cemetery. Along the south line of West MacArthur, there are 27-foot tall power lines that are going to remain. Caveat to this, this application had been deferred to a later date by the applicant so that they could get their paperwork through the FAA. The FAA has reviewed this airstrip and has made a determination that it would not have any detrimental effects on the currently developed properties around it. That includes the presence of these power lines that would remain aerial. It would require them to be identified with those bubbles that they put on them so that they're visible. And essentially, any takeoffs or landings have to accommodate for the height of those power lines, which essentially means the planes have to go over them and then land, and they're just landing farther down the airstrip. What the FAA also determined was that they're not going to provide any airspace protection. What that means is that there's no required development restrictions on any properties around there. A discussion during one of the meetings talked about, there could be a 20-story building built right here, right at the end of the runway and the FAA is not going to say anything about it. The airstrip would have to adapt and accommodate it. It could possibly force, any future development could force the airstrip to become a one-way airstrip, meaning they could only take off or land in one direction. Essentially, they have to accommodate any type of development around there. The FAA isn't going to require anybody to have any height restrictions or certain type of development restrictions and what type of uses can be there. So the FAA will allow the airstrip, but they're not restricting any type of development around there. That was the primary concern of the city of Cheney. They don't own this land, but they were concerned that the presence of the airstrip might deter future development or have provided restrictions of development within their city limits for The, I'm gonna summarize just a bunch of the information that's in the staff report. Staff looked at airstrips that are in Sedgwick County. There's approximately 19 of them for private airstrips in Sedgwick County. Many of them are on a single person's farm. They might use it as a duster plane or they have their own hobby aircraft. And there aren't very many where there's developable land nearby that's like prime for development that's in platted or to have platted property already established. The one that we did identify is in the city of Valley Center. The airstrip existed in the county prior to county zoning. And then at some point, the city of Valley Center grew, annexed the property into the city. And then properties to the south of the airstrip were developed and platted in the early 2000s. When those properties were platted, one developer platted 100-foot easement on their side and the other property platted 100-foot building setback, effectively creating a 200-foot space south, directly south of the runway where no development could occur. Staff reached out to the city of Valley Center and it was determined that those, that easement, effective overall easement south of the runway was voluntary. The city of Valley Center did not require that, nor did the FAA. Staff's perspective is, is even though the FAA doesn't require any development restrictions, the presence of the airstrip may psychologically have an impact on future development in the area where somebody might have plans for it and then all potentially change their planes because they would be potentially in a hazard zone for aircrafts to crash. But I am going to reiterate, the FAA has looked at the current development and they have looked at the surrounding area and determined that an airstrip at this location would not be considered unsafe. They have approved this already, which is one of the conditions of approval. So if the conditional use is approved, they already have their blessing from the FAA. The comprehensive plan identifies this area to be in city of Cheney's urban growth area. Looking at the city of Cheney's future land use map, they don't identify area outside their city for future land use at this time. They only identify land in their city. And this area here, though currently mostly undeveloped, they say would likely become commercial development. I guess that's a little bit more positive than residential, but that's what their comprehensive plan would identify for the area. Again, overall, the staff recommendation was for denial and I'll say that our denial recommendation came prior to the information about the FAA. We did not receive the information about what the FAA determination was until about two days prior to the Cheney meeting. At that point, it really was not available to revamp a staff report and review the FAA prior to one meeting and we can't really have one meeting and then change our staff report and have a different recommendation for other boards as well. And so the FAA information was essentially new information and the FAA has recommended that this be approved because they have approved it based on their review of the area. There has been no public opposition against it. The Cheney meeting and the Citizens Advisory Board Three meeting had individuals there from the surrounding area with questions. Nobody was really in staunch opposition against it. There was just some questions and concerns about development restrictions or how is the airport going to operate? Are they going to have onsite fuel storage? Just different things like that. Couple of those answers are that with onsite fuel stores, there's no restriction against it, just like there's no restriction against onsite fuel storage for farm operations. The applicant will likely go into more detail about this, but typically those who have private air aircraft don't typically store a ton of fuel on their site. They typically have enough to possibly top off their tank in order for them to get to an airport where they can then just purchase fuel if they need to do a longer flight. But again, there's no restriction against it, not even from the FAA's point of view. And again, all lots would have to be developed with a house. They cannot just be a hangar. The staff recommended conditions of approval, if you were to recommend approval, include that it would be used for private aircraft only. Aircraft hangars or associated buildings can only be used for storage, servicing, and maintaining of non-commercial aircraft or the equipment necessary to maintain the airstrip. They do plan to have covenants in this where essentially maintenance of the airstrip would be a combined effort of all the lot owners as governed by their covenants. The site would be developed and maintained in general conformance of the site plan and the site plan is the plat and that's where the easement is. And in conformance with all the regulations, including zoning, building, fire, utility regulations and codes, the airstrip must comply with all federal aviation administration requirements. And then the one that the Citizens Advisory Board Three added to this was that they would not be able to light the airstrip so that it would not be able to be used at night. They have a determination, determine that this would be a visual airfield only. And so without lights, they can't land at night, nor can they use it in bad weather where visibility is such that they would have to rely on instruments in order to take off or land like you would see typically more like Eisenhower or Jabara. like you would see typically more like Eisenhower or Jabara. And I can go through the rest of our slides here. Can go to the next one, please. This is zoning map, next one, please. This is showing that it's in outside the city of Cheney, but inside its urban area of influence. Next picture. Similar thing, this is the actual boundary of the urban area of influence for Cheney. Next picture. Again, this is the plat showing the easement for it along to the rear of the nine lots. Next picture. This is looking west towards the northern end of the site. Right now, it's currently used, the majority of this property is used as an agricultural field. The Grace lot is down here in the southeast corner, and that's developed with a house. Next picture. This is property that's actually south of this eye and arrow actually needs to be scooted down. Sorry, it's actually looking at this property down here. It's a development on the south side. Next picture. This is looking west away from the site, so that needs to be flipped to look to the other side. The other west side of 391st Street South is an agricultural field. Next picture. This is the house that's located on the northeast corner of MacArthur and 391st Street South. That's in the city limits of Cheney. Next picture. This is the ag field to the east of that house. Next picture. And this is the cemetery that's due north of the eastern side of the site, also within the city of Cheney. The core development of Cheney, where you start getting into more densely urban neighborhoods and things like that, is approximately a half mile to the north of MacArthur. And with that, I can stand for any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Joe Johnson.
Philip, if the staff had favored this development, why would they not have approved it based on FAA approval?
That's a good question. So we originally wrote our staff report and it was ahead of a previously scheduled MAPC meeting. In discussions with the applicant, they requested defer all of that meeting until they were able to get their FAA determination. As I mentioned before, we received that FAA determination about two days prior to the city of Cheney's planning commission meeting. That would didn't give us much time to review the FAA determination and look to turn a staff report around in order to get to the city of Cheney, as well as the Citizens Advisory Board. So we did not necessarily have the information to say that the FAA had already approved it, nor did we want to present one staff report to the city of Cheney with a recommendation for denial and then change a staff report to present to the Citizens Advisory Board or to this body and possibly have some sort of confusion as to what staff recommendation was. So again, our staff recommendation was based on no information from the FAA. In addition to the idea of having possible negative impacts on surrounding properties, because even though the FAA does not require development restrictions, somebody could actually change their perception, or they could change their perception for development, and it could actually inhibit development in the area because somebody might not want to develop at the end of a runway for the perceived hazard of an airplane flying in and possibly crashing if something goes wrong.
So that was one of the reasons for your denial?
Yes. But I will reiterate, the two boards that I've heard it right prior to this have recommended approval unanimously. The city of Cheney and Citizens Advisory Board both have recommended approval unanimously.
Subject to these.
Subject to these.
Conditions.
The cab recommended, subject to those with the additional one about no lighting.
But they can't do that because the FAA reports, the FAA does not.
No, they could. The FAA says nothing about it. The FAA would allow them to have lights. The cab said, well, we don't think that's a good idea, so we want to restrict it to have no lights.
Gotcha, okay.
Kirk Sponso, deputy county councillor, because this is to be analyzed under the golden factors and because professional staff recommendations is a point of analysis. I'm just hoping for clarity from you, is staff standing by the recommendation of denial?
At this point, yes. I'm just trying to paint the whole picture of here's the road we've been on. These two boards have recommended approval. Our recommendation is still denial and the basis of our recommendation.
Thank you.
Commissioner Aldrich.
Yeah, actually, I was going to ask that question. That since in light that you now have the FAA not opposed to it, if that changes staff recommendations at all?
Really, just for a point of process, I don't think it's wise to change recommendation midstream. Again, with the background information that two advisory boards essentially have reviewed this and have had all of their questions answered and they're recommending approval, you can take that information into consideration today in addition to our staff recommendation for denial. So we still have our basis of denial. However, the two boards that have heard this, they have recommended approval, knowing they had the information of the FAA for consideration.
I would think that the FAA chiming in and not have a problem would have a significant impact on whether or not staff would make a recommendation of approval or denial.
I understand your question. And again, I look at the timing of it where it was just very close turnaround to our first public hearing on this item. And we didn't want to present one staff report with one recommendation to an advisory board and then change our recommendation for future ones. I was going to chime in.
That's why you asked the question, is that still, still your opinion today?
I'm going to defer to Scott.
Yeah, I would also suggest that we're the first recommendation out of the gate, as Philip has indicated. The other thing too, is that when we see cases in close proximity to cities and communities, we often try to be protective or defer to those communities. And in this case, after we provide our recommendation, city Cheney looked at it and said, yeah, they didn't have an issue with it, at least their planning commission didn't. So that's an important factor for us, but that's the way these county staff reports go, is that we're the first ones out of the chute. So in terms of whether we're going to change our recommendation, I think Philip's absolutely right. Not at this point, just because of the confusion it could create with a, with the process. So, but as Philip's indicated, you've got all the facts, you've got the recommendations and the report from the FAA, so.
Okay. Well, now ask the applicant and or agent to come forward. You have 10 minutes to present and please give us your name and address for the record.
Thanks, Philip. Good job. Happy birthday. Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Jeff Grace, 4400 South 391st Street West, Cheney, Kansas. And I'm here on behalf of the divorce and myself. We're excited to present the South Fork Air Park to you. My goal is to speak to the concerns of the staff report mainly, and I hope to answer any questions or concerns you might have. I'm here as an owner applicant. So I was the one on the slide. This is my home. Here, we're currently living in, we're actually building a home next to it, so that'll be an accessory apartment. And in a sense, I'm also here kind of in a capacity as an agent as well. So I can speak to the technical questions you might have concerning the airports, airplane operations. I've been a professional pilot for 30 years. The last 26 years of those, I've been with an airline. If approved, this will be, like Philip said, this will be the 20th private airport in our Air Capital County. And we don't think, the divorce and I, we don't think this is just merely selfish, selfish ambition. There's a real need, there's a desire for these type of lots. All these lots are full. You never see them come to market. Any of the change hands typically all happen off market. Word of mouth gets out that one is available and they're sold right away. Yoder is full. They added a second addition to the south. All those lots sold out right away. So we believe there's, there's actually a high demand for this. South Fork will be similar in size and scope to the 19 others in the county. And this will actually be the second one in Cheney. And again, like Philip pointed out, no commercial activity. It's going to be light activity, recreational use during the day. Just like we see people riding ATVs and motorcycles and whatnot out in the country. So the rest of the time, I'd like to kind of speak to the staff report. There were some issues with that and whether or not they would change your recommendation and the confusion that would cause. I'd take responsibility for that because as Philip said, we didn't have the approval of the FAA. We hadn't talked to the city yet. We didn't know the city would be involved in the conversation. So that's where they came up with their findings. But in the meantime, we did talk to the FAA. We talked to them and you should have the report in your packet. And that's, there's a couple of issues that it came up again and again in the staff report. And one of them was safety. And the FAA in their report and their, their approval twice, they said it once and they reiterated that they've looked at the safety of persons and property on the ground around the airport and also within the airspace. The other big initial objection in the staff report was the city of Cheney. We didn't know at that time if there would be any building restrictions. Again, we're talking about the area here. As far as I know, it's always been agricultural use. The city, the city does not own it. If they were to do anything with it, if they were ever to own it, they, they had it planned as a C two, a commercial zoning area, which really in relation to an airport would be the second best ag, ag land. But when we did talk to the city planners and we had the meeting, they reiterated to me that they have absolutely no plans for that area whatsoever. So we got the FAA approval. They spoke to the safety concerns. The city of Cheney all unanimously approved. And then the cab, the cab approved as well, unanimous on that board. And we are, we're content with all the alternate conditions that the county has put forth. If, if we do get the approval and as well as the cab, because that's always been the plan. And that's in accordance with what the FAA has envisioned for this airport as well. We share the same vision with the cab, with the FAA and with the county as far as those stipulations go. And again, to reiterate, to date, we've had no opposition. The citizens have all been notified, a thousand, a thousand feet from every edge of this property line. These people have gotten letters and then we actually delayed the meeting, as, as Philip said, to get the FAA approval. So everybody's been actually notified twice of all the meetings. And they've had a couple of months or better now to be heard. And we, we've not yet had any opposition that I'm aware of. And Philip could speak to that if he knows something that I don't know. And with that, I would just like to open it up to any questions you might have for us. Hope I can answer those.
Thank you, Mr. Grace. Any questions from the commission? Mr. Commissioner Zimbalman.
When we approved this last year, I know you had the kind of the future airstrip drawn in there, but it was treated as an easement or such. Were you, the entire time you bought this, was this your plan to turn this into an airstrip?
No, not, not initially. I actually, we lived, we own this property here and we lived in this home. And I bugged the divorce for quite some time to buy 10 acres here. And it didn't seem like it would ever happen. And my thought was, I would like to have, the airplane I want to have, I want to actually build takes off in lanes in a very short distance. So I kind of envisioned maybe a runway for myself. And then my wife ended up wanting to build a home, a new home. So we, we started construction on that. And then I spoke to the divorce about potentially having a longer runway here. That different airplanes could use, again, small private airplanes on an occasional use, limited basis. And they were actually really agreeable to the idea and they platted out the other eight lots.
So what I'm getting at is, the original time when we approved this plat, I guess, nobody told you that you couldn't do an airstrip or you could, or, because that wasn't even part of the plan at that point?
Well, when, when it was platted, it was part of the plan. That's, that's in the plat.
Okay. Anybody tell you that you might have trouble getting an airstrip approved at that point?
No.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Stand by. We'll see if there's any other comments. So appreciate your time.
And if you could, could you bring up the, the slides that I sent in, please? I just wanted to make one more point. The next one, please. So this would be, so in the, in the staff report, they had a picture. So this is South Fork Air Park. This is the other airport in Cheney. But this is the South Fork Air Park. So in the staff report, they had just drawn an extended center line off of each end of the runway. This orange line would actually be the traffic pattern for the airport. That was the only other thing I'd like to point out.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll return it back to the commission for consideration.
To move for approval, but I hate to vote against staff reports, but I'm going to.
Second.
Just to be clear, we need to find, have alternative findings as to why we're denying the staff's approval or the staff's recommendation. So you need to include that as part of your motion. That would be the FAA report and the city of Cheney council approval as alternative findings as to why. Are you okay with that?
Yes.
As, and as a friendly second?
Second.
Okay.
And as a clarification, the Citizens Advisory Board recommended approval and they added a condition that would not allow lighting.
Right.
Yeah, but that's not part of the staff.
That's not part of the staff recommended conditions. I just didn't know if you were assuming that or if you wanted to go without it.
I'm going to include that.
Okay. Are you? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Mr. Wadel.
Thank you, sir. Just to get a little bit more clarification on it. I think what I've heard from the discussion is that in terms of the golden factors, that for number two, the suitability, the subject property for the use to which it's been restricted, that yes, everything everyone acknowledges that could be restricted to the agriculture. But when it comes to three, which is the extent to which removal will detrimentally affect nearby properties, that I think based on the discussion, that the information from the FAA and the recommendation from the Cheney Planning Commission and the recommendation from the cab, perhaps for added, added insights that it will not have an adverse or negative impact to the nearby properties. And also that number six is conformance with the request to change the adopted or recognized comprehensive plan and policies, that in the comp plan, it points to this area being just outside city of Cheney's future land use, future, sorry, urban growth area. And that since the city of Cheney's planning commission has recommended approval for this, it lends itself to, to mean that it would be in compliance with the community investments plan because they feel like it's a good addition to the community.
I think that's in agreement with the grantor of the motion and the second.
Just like I said.
Second.
All right. Seeing no more, oh, hold on. Commissioner Aldrich.
Can we have a clarification again regarding, no, I'm just regarding the lights, the lighting on that?
Will be no lighting.
Second.
I got that, but what I'm referring to is that why, what, what group was that that didn't want the lighting?
The cab.
The Citizens Advisory Board for District Three.
The county.
Agreed with everything else plus that.
Okay, do any of them live around this area, do you know of?
I don't know.
Well, because if there's no opposition from those who live around the area, what difference would that make?
I think it speaks possibly to the safety of when you can take off and land.
Okay.
And, and I'm much happier without the lights and without them being able to land in bad weather.
And the, the agent or applicant wouldn't have an issue with that? Or you good with that?
We're seeing affirmative, yes.
Yeah, he said he was agreeing.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, call them for vote. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item is conditionally use 2024 dash 271.
Yes, sir, thank you. Brad Ditherley, MAPD. We are discussing case con 2024 dash 00271, which was deferred from the January 9th, 2025 meeting. In this case, the applicants are requesting a conditional use to permit oil and gas drilling on a portion of the property. The applicant owns a couple of properties. One is 74.8 acres roughly and is located on the southwest corner of West 59th Street South and South Broadway. The other parcel is west of that and is approximately 59.72 acres in size. The, the total being 100 acres are currently in use for oil and gas exploration purposes. And the applicants are seeking to bring the use into conformance with the unified zoning code. The application area is zoned RR, rural residential and SF 20, single family residential, which which generally permits by right agricultural activities, larger lot residential uses, and a limited set of, of non-residential uses. Per the UZC, oil and gas drilling in the RR and the SF20 districts requires conditional use approval. If we can take a look at the attached site plan. Here we, we see that the plan shows the existing well roughly 210 feet west of South Broadway Avenue and roughly 1,800 feet north of West 63rd Street. South, there is a tank battery just to the south of the well. The UZC requires structures to maintain a minimum 85 foot setback from the center line of the section line roads. Any placement of storage tanks would have to adhere to this setback. And then the site plan does not show any proposed locations for storage tanks. The UZC does require solid screening for all uses other than single family and duplex, when the uses are budding or across the street from residential zoning districts. And so for this application area, there would be requirement to screen the proposed use on all sides with a minimum of a six to eight foot screening fence. As far as zoning, properties to the north are zoned SF5 and are developed with single family dwellings and agricultural uses. Properties to the east across South Broadway Avenue are zoned SF20 and RR and are developed with an electrical substation agricultural uses. And then properties to the south are zoned RR and general commercial and are developed with single family dwellings, agricultural uses and auto repair service. And then lastly, properties to the west are zoned SF5 and are part of the Union Pacific Railroad. The subject site is unplatted and plating is not required for the intended use. The site does have access to South Broadway Avenue, which is a paved four lane county arterial street with open ditches. If needed or required, water services would be provided by the City of Wichita and sewer services would be provided on site. The request for oil and gas drilling is not in conformance with the community investments plan. If we can go to the future growth map. The 2035 Wichita Future Growth Map identifies the area as appropriate for small city urban growth area. With the subject site being in the Hayesville urban growth area, staff did review their comprehensive plan to identify the proposed future land use. If we can go to that Hayesville map, I think it may be the next one. Uh, yeah, right here. So there is no arrow. And I'm having a hard time, I think it may be right, right here is where we're looking at. So the future community growth map for the City of Hayesville does identify the site as appropriate for residential. And the use of oil and gas drilling would not be appropriate, an appropriate use for that area. It also does not, it's not in compliance with the South Wichita Hayesville Area Plan, which is located with, so this is located within that plan. The future development concept map also identifies the subject site as appropriate for low density residential development. And again, the use of oil and gas drilling would not be considered an appropriate use. If we can go to the site pics. This is looking east away from the site across Broadway, next picture. This is looking northeast at the electrical substation across Broadway, next picture. This is looking from the interior of the property north at the location where they're drilling, next picture. This is looking north away from, I believe it's West 53rd Street. Yeah, next picture. This is looking north within the site, kind of up Broadway, next picture. This is looking northeast away from the, it's actually kind of over in this general direction into the neighborhood surrounding the north property line, next picture. This is looking southwest into the property, again, kind of in the middle. This is a very large, very large property, so we got several pictures, next picture. This is again, kind of from the north looking south down Broadway, next picture. This is standing from here looking south. And you can see that there's a second operation of some sort going in on the west side of this large property. That is separate from what is occurring over here on the east side that we've already seen, next picture. This is a blurry picture and I apologize about that, but this is looking at the auto repair shop to the south off of Broadway, next picture. Again, this is looking south, kind of from the northeast corner at the main, what looks like the main operation, kind of right off of Broadway, next picture. This is looking southeast down Broadway, next picture. This is from that northwest corner looking southeast at what appears to be the main operation, next picture. And then this is looking west, actually in this corner here, kind of at the railroad property. I think that may be it. Oh, this is from the Broadway perspective, looking west into what I'm calling the main operation. Anymore? That's it. So based on the information staff has gathered, we do recommend denial of the application. I do want to point out that this is in regards to number three and four of the golden rules, that a large operation like oil and gas drilling so close to several single family residential properties could detrimentally affect nearby properties. And that approval of the conditional use to permit oil and gas drilling could have a negative effect on the public welfare. That it's a large operation, it could produce unsightly aesthetics and/or high level, high levels of noise and odors. I will also state that we have received one phone call from a member of the public who is opposed to the request and that we did meet with the City of Hayesville Planning Commission on January 9th and they recommended denial of the, of the request with four in favor of denial and zero against and one abstention. I will also state that the applicant's attorney did send in a letter yesterday to the county legal staff and to planning staff and asked that it also be shared with you. I sent that to you, hopefully you all received that. And then lastly, if however, in the opinion of the planning commission, the request is determined to be, to be appropriate, the planning commission could adopt, should adopt alternative findings and it's recommended the approval be subject to the conditions listed in the staff report. With that, I can stand for any questions.
Thank you, Brad. Real quick, you just told us that the Hayesville Planning Commission voted for 01, but in the minutes, it appears that it's 311. That it was three against, or to recommend dial Williams, Coleman, Rinke and Azier was a nay.
That's something I would have to take a look at with the Hayesville Planning Commission. When I asked them, they gave me the 401 and that's what I recall, but I can, I can double check with them after this.
It hasn't changed the outcome, I just wanted to be clear.
Sure.
So, any other questions?
I have two questions.
Commissioner Joe Johnson.
One, do we have, we have jurisdiction over this, is that correct?
I'm going to let legal answer that.
Kirk's counsel, Deputy County Counselor. First and foremost, our office appreciates the dialogue and the question about jurisdiction. Our office has had ample opportunity to review the, to review the claims and review the relevant statutes. We do appreciate that different statutes provide different powers to the counties. However, specifically in this situation, dealing with potential zoning regulations, our office does find it, that we do believe we do have jurisdiction over this. My recommendation to the board today would be to treat this as you do any other conditional use case in which you analyze it pursuant to the golden factors.
And my second, second question is if, if we do have jurisdiction, why are they still working on that site?
So I will attempt to answer that question if Philip or Scott or Kelly wants to jump in. I do believe that we allow applicants to continue. Scott may be wanting to.
Yeah, I would suggest, Kelly, if you're willing, it would be good to have you go up and explain the enforcement action.
Sure.
And before we head to the next question, I thought I saw hands over here. I know, after you, I saw hands. Okay, we'll get to you, Commissioner Nix.
Good afternoon, Kelly Dixon, Metropolitan Area Building. It has been our method of operation throughout the years. So when we're enforcing a zoning violation, once the applicant receives a notice and they start the process to get the zoning changed, we stop enforcement at that time and allow them to continue.
Okay, Commissioner Nix.
Hey, so Kelly, how far along are they in this operation? Are we getting close to having the thing completed?
I drove by last time I saw a tank battery and pump jack.
Must, must be about finished then.
I'm sorry?
We must be just about finished then.
I would think so. But they were full into drilling when we were there the first time, so. In the 15 days that we gave them to cease, they probably finished up the drill.
Commissioner Williams, may.
Is there only that one well on the site now? Or are there some that were there already?
You know, on this particular tract, I don't know if there's any other ones. I know that there's a tract of land south of it that has operating wells. And I believe it was a history on this tract as well from what I heard, but I couldn't affirm that.
Seeing no more questions from the commission, we'll bring the applicant agent forward. Please give us your name and address for the record and you'll have up to 10 minutes. And it's together, total 10 minutes, not each.
I understand. I'm going to just be really brief because I sent in a letter.
Address for the record.
I'm sorry, Chris Steinkamp with the Pugil and Rathman and McIntyre, 8301 East 21st Street North, Suite 450. I represent Bear Petroleum, who is the agent for the applicant and the applicant is the landowner of this tract. I just want to be very brief, I sent in a letter concerning the jurisdictional question. Obviously, I respectfully disagree with the county counselor. They haven't cited any authority to me that would suggest that they have jurisdiction, but maybe they have it. Let me say this very, very quickly, the well is drilled, it is producing 40 barrels of oil a day. Stopping it now would be a substantial expense for the county because I think that's likely a taking of private property that you'd have to pay them for. So that's a question, but there's two potential grounds of jurisdiction here. MAPC is a unit formed by the county with city and county authorities. And counties are granted zoning authority by statute. As you know, that statute was passed in 1974. It is subject to a number of exceptions, one of which is an exception to the authority to regulate oil and gas. That is a statutory exception to the authority granted to the county. The second ground of authority for this board is city zoning authority, which was granted pursuant to a Home Rule Constitutional Amendment, which was, which was passed to the Kansas Constitution in 1961. It is also subject to compliance with all state laws of uniform application, of which the, there is a statute reserving exclusive jurisdiction to regulation of oil and gas to the Kansas Corporation Commission. There's no exception to that rule. There's no, and this issue has been considered by obviously the legislature, which has passed the exception to county zoning and city zoning. And it's also been considered by the Kansas Supreme Court, which found that the KCC has exclusive jurisdiction. It was also the subject of an Attorney General's opinion that found the same thing. So all of those things being said, that's, that is our position on that. I want to turn it over to Dick Schremer, who's lived out here for 40 or 50 years, and he can explain to you more what's going on. This oil field has existed since 1955. There are about 160 wells in the Gladys Field, some of which are on this property. There's, a number of them are plugged, some are continuing to be active. That field existed prior to either the county or the city having zoning authority under any rule. So let me turn it over to Mr. Schremer and he can explain a little bit further about what's going on. Thank you.
Yes, I'm Dick Schremer, 9801 South Meridian, Peck, Kansas, 67120. I want to thank all the commissioners for showing up today to the meeting and I know it's bad weather and I know it's been a long afternoon, so I will keep it as brief as possible. A little history of myself, I went to work in the oil field when I was in high school in 1970. In 1974, I got hired by Kiwanee Oil Company, I was working in Rice and Barton County areas. I was transferred to the Madison Lodge, Barber County, 1976, and worked down there for, going on five years. And we were bought out by a company called Gulf Oil, no major company you may recognize, spelled G U L F. And at that time, they owned the Gladys unit, which basically the north end of the Gladys unit oil field is 55th Street North. The west side is Meridian, the south, the east side is Broadway and it runs two miles to the south. So four square miles of oil field. And as Chris said, it was developed in the 50s, but there's wells dating back to 1928 in this field. And those are the scarier wells because we're not really sure where they're at or how they were plugged. So anyway, I was transferred and promoted by Gulf Oil in 1979 and moved from Barber County Medicine Lodge to a lease house on 58th Street, right in the middle of this field. Matter of fact, this well is basically on 60th Street, if there was a 60th Street. So I lived in that house for six years, this place is my backyard. My oldest son graduated Valde Torre in the campus high school in 1987. We have roots in Hayesville. Bear Petroleum was started in Hayesville in 1985 after I left Gulf Oil, who had sold out to Chevron. It was decided I wasn't Chevron material with a high school education, so I went out and started my own company called Bear Petroleum. I went and rented a post office box in Hayesville, Kansas, Box 438. And we're using that box today. We've had that for 40 years, we are at a home in Hayesville and we know this area. Most of this well was prematurely, this field was prematurely plugged by Chevron. If you look at this map here.
Sir, I need you to stay at the podium and use the pointer, the mouse.
Okay, this here?
Yeah, this is a broadcast on YouTube.
You see down there where the pointer's at? Those are existing wells, these wells were drilled in the 50s. I've been the owner and operator of these wells since the early 90s. The picture he showed you where there was other work going on a little while ago, that was in the maintenance of an existing well. These two wells are actually on Blood Estate properties, as well as this 100 acres up here is Blood Estates. I'm sure you're familiar with that name, the Bloods have been in this area since 1871. Over 150 years, they've been down here homesteaded. And now outside people are coming in and telling them what they can do with their ground. They don't want single family housing. They've got a walking irrigation system on here raising soybeans, irrigated soybeans at 80 bushel an acre, sometimes bringing as much as $15 a bushel. They've got water 17 foot deep, static level, so that costs them very little to pump the water to irrigate. This is an ongoing entity for them. If you look, I drilled right over here in the corner. The reason we did that, you can actually see the wheel track of the irrigation system coming around here like this. I drilled outside that wheel so not to compromise the irrigated field. And we got back here in the corner and on basically piece of wasteland on the north side of these trees. And that's where we drilled the well. And when we're all of a sudden done here, we will have just a hair over an acre footprint there. Now, this isn't your ordinary well. This is a horizontal well. So this well is drilled from here to here. So in a normal vertical oil well, you'll get about 20 foot of pay. Where we're situated, we drill down through that 20 foot of pay, and we have 10 times that much pay in the well. So we're looking at 2,000 foot of oil saturated pay in this well, where normally on a vertical well, you would get 20 feet. This well would be a tax-paying generating thing for probably my great-grandkids. Because the field here was, has been here for over 65 years under water flood, and before that, it was drilled. So it pays, it's gonna pay some great tax dollars to the county. Matter of fact, this little well right down here that we are showing the maintenance on, in 2024, we paid almost $4,000 in property tax on that well, and it's just a four-barrel well. This well over here is 10 times better than that well. So you can take 10 times the taxes probably. Biggest portion of those taxes go to the school district in Hayesville. Almost $2,000, those, those 4,000 went to, just to the school district, not counting the county and the local township. So what you're doing, we do not have any more ideas for development in here. This is the only well we have to drill because we're covering 2,000 foot of formation with that well. Now, if you want to develop that in housing, that is not going to affect us at all. Something you might keep in mind, in this tract that you're looking right here, there's over 13 plugged wells that we know of. There could be more that were drilled back in the 20s and 30s that we don't have record of. I don't know if I'd want any of my family building a house on an unplugged well. I don't think you want your family living on a house in an unplugged well. This, folks, is irrigation and oil field, is what this is. It's not really set up to be housing. And if you look up here, this is not your finest housing in Central County. You come down here, you're in the same situation. You've got railroad tracks to the west, and you've got Broadway to the east. I mean, it's not prime living country. There is no city water, there is no city sewer. Up in this area where I lived, I had a sandpoint 20 foot deep for my freshwater. It was sitting right next to my septic tank, and all my neighbors were doing the same thing. So hell, we're just in there circulating water, okay? That's what this whole area is full here. There are no county service, city services, no water, no sewer, no water, no sewer. I do believe these people over here have water now. So I'm open to any questions.
Great timing, Mr. Schremer, thank you. Amazing.
And I appreciate the county furnishing the map for me.
All right, so we have a couple of questions for you, sir. Commissioner Blick?
On page 15, is that where you say your placement of your well is, has that little black dot, is that correct?
Well, it's right there.
About right there? Okay, that's what it's showing on, on the, on page 15 also. So question I have is, it has a large irrigation that is in the middle and it goes around that big circle. And usually most irrigation, they have another sprayer that sprays out. How far away are you from any water touching your pump?
None, we are probably 80 feet away. They have a dropping irrigation system, not one with an arm on it.
Okay.
So where the outside wheel is on this irrigation system that you can actually see, if you look at that little wheel there.
Yep.
You can see where it goes around, we'll be outside of that.
Okay.
And the water goes straight down.
Okay, and I just checked the FEMA map, and it shows water runoff is actually leaving that field right where your pump is. And it goes across, and it'll actually go across to that water, or further down south, there's actually a lake that's further south also.
Well, actually, this drainage goes to the big ditch.
Okay.
And there's a culvert right here, okay? You can't see it.
Okay.
You just have, trust me on this one.
All right.
And if you go up here about right here, there's another culvert. They both drain to the big ditch. And when we're done with our dirt work, we'll be putting a culvert in right here. And it'll drain that field through that culvert, right to that culvert, right along Broadway that goes to the big ditch. So the water will run around our facility on both sides. There's a culvert to the north of our well and a culvert to the south of our well. The water will split when we get done with the dirt work, which will be done in the next couple of weeks. The water will go around our well and go through one of those two culverts.
All right, thank you. And then last question is, up there at the top, left corner, or sorry, yeah, further up there on that property line, that's the Double Nickel Farms Big Orchard up there? You don't see any problems or anything if you're drilling all the way that way?
No, we're actually down here.
Okay.
We're in the center of this property.
Okay, no problem, sounds good, thank you.
Mr. Schremer, staff's recommendation for denial is pretty much based on Golden Rules Number Three and Number Four. Can you address those issues as to why we should find alternative and approve?
Well, I'm not sure what those are, sir, I'm sorry.
Okay, so the one was that it could detrimentally affect nearby single-family residential properties?
I, I don't see how, how it can affect them. We, we basically have no noise and we have no odor at this time.
And then the second one was unsightly aesthetics or noise and odise, so.
Well, I really think it, it improves the looks of it. Of course, I'm an oil guy, I like oil stuff. But you're looking right here at a trashy old farmyard. You've seen it, and you come down here, and this is the ugliest grove of trees you've ever seen in your life. And you come down here, and there's an old fire station that must have 30 abandoned vehicles parked around. I don't even know how they get in the front door of the place. It should be a salvage yard is what it should be listed as. I think I've improved the looks of the place.
As a follow-up to that, then, the staff does make an alternative action with alternative findings and, and conditions. Are you in agreement to those conditions?
I, I think, the only one that I think is silly is the, the guarding, the, the, I put up a six-foot chain link fence around everything, it's locked. Everything's guarded with, with drainage and all that sort of thing. Where, actually, we have a spill prevention and control and countermeasure plan there that we filed with the EPA for water control. They, they call it shading or something along that line. I, I think that would turn ugly within just a few years. And it's only going to go up 10 feet, and you know, these are 20-foot tanks and a 20-foot pumping unit. So I really don't know where we're hiding anything.
Right.
I think that'd be a little silly. The rest of them, I don't see any problem with.
And the reason for that is because it's adjacent to residential zoning districts, and that's our code, that it requires a six-to-eight foot fence.
So the fence is there.
Okay. All right, did I see another question? Commissioner Aldrich?
Sir, my question's got to do with permits, mainly because I, I don't have the knowledge of, that you have when it comes to the oil operations and stuff. But right now, you have to have state permits, correct?
We have a permit with the Kansas Corporation Commission to drill the well. We have, they have a cross authority with Kansas Department of Health and Environment for the pit that we needed to drill the well. This intent to drill that we filed with Kansas Corporation Commission, they check everything out around there before they, they approve the permit. And it's actually sent to the county clerk. So the county was notified about this before the well was ever drilled, county clerk.
Okay, and what, when, do they expire? When do they expire, or do they expire the permits?
The permits expire whenever, when we get done drilling the well, we have a form, a KCC form called an ACO1, and it's a well completion form. And when we complete the well, we fill all that out, and then we're good with the Kansas Corporation Commission. The, the drilling intent that we file, the application has like a six-month term that we have to get the well drilled in, but if we get the well drilled in that term, well, then we're okay.
Okay, and the other wells that you personally have right now are still active permits. Does this site where you're looking at, does that follow under that permit for the other wells, or is this a separate?
No, the, we don't, I don't know that there's actually a permit with the KCC, but we are licensed and, and bonded. So, but as far as permits for drilling the well, like I say, they, they expire after a few months if you don't have the well drilled. But once you're up and running, then you're dealing with the leasehold, like we're drilling with the Blood family that's been down there since 1871. And they would like to get all the revenue off their property that they can get, and they have no intentions of putting that in housing.
Okay, and I guess my other question is probably more geared towards legal. You know, from what the attorney for the agent has said, and he's seemed to be pretty clear on what he's saying, do you concur what he's saying about authority with the KCC, or do you see that differently?
I'll refer to.
So Kirk Spongel, Deputy County Counselor, once again, I believe in question what the applicant's attorney is referring to is actually the statute 19-101A19, where it, it goes into some detail that counties can't regulate the production or drilling of any oil or gas well in any manner, which would result in the duplication of regulation by the State Corporation Commission and the Kansas Department of Health and Environment pursuant to Chapter 55. And it goes from on, on from there and talks about us not being able to require licenses or permitting for the drilling or production of oil and gas wells. Now, with that said, I don't want to go into deep, deep analysis of this, but this is found within the county's home rule authority. As I indicated previously, there are different avenues and routes in which counties get powers and authorities in order to do regulatory actions. So this is actually separate from the zoning authority that you have that is being considered today. That's why I want to reiterate, I would recommend you do proceed as if this were a regular conditional use application and Golden Factors are being analyzed.
Well, I'm sort of thinking that either way, this thing's going to be tied up in litigation somehow, and.
Could I respond to that just for one second?
Yes.
Chris Steinkamp, Attorney for Bear Petroleum. It's more than just the statute he cited. 19101A sub 19 prohibits counties from regulating oil and gas. Also, 74623A1 exceeds all exclusive authority to regulate oil and gas activities to the Kansas Corporation Commission. There's no exceptions to that. In fact, it's, it says specifically, the State Corporation Commission's jurisdiction shall include all practices involved in the exploration for and gathering of oil and gas and the drilling, production, lease, storage, treatment, abandonment, post-abandonment of oil and gas wells. I mean, they have plenary exclusive authority for the entire state. And that, the, the logic here is, first of all, that the 19101A statute is an exception to county authority. The reason why 74623 exists is because there was previously contemporaneous authority with the Kansas Department of Health and Environment for certain things. That was taken away and consolidated in the Kansas Corporation Commission. And secondly, that language dovetails exactly with the way the state removes city constitutional zoning authority by completely occupying the area. And, and I've cited a case here that I will not pronounce correctly, but it's something like Dwaffie's Manufacturing versus the City of Topeka. That's a weird name, I don't know if I pronounced it right, it's 309 Kansas 136. And they cite specifically the language, when the state legislature says that the authority to do something is hereby vested exclusively in the state, that means that cities may not control that or zone it. And so those two things together, including this corporation commissions, excuse me, including the Supreme Court's interpretation of those, I think conclusively established that the city and the state and the county do not have authority here. The Kansas Department of Health and Environment does not have authority here.
Kirk Spongel, Deputy County Counselor, as your legal advisor on this board, I would recommend you listen to my prior recommendations. I don't believe this is an appropriate avenue or venue in which to make such arguments and determinations. I would also point out that the applicant and counsel have submitted an application for approval or denial, but in our effect right now are going against the very process itself. So I would reiterate my prior stance.
You're obviously free to follow your own counsel's advice.
Well, and I'm, I'm not trying to litigate this right here, I'm just, my concerns are the investment and the, and the money that's in the, in the history of the operations right now. And then are we just, you know, if we deny it, you know, I don't know, if we even got, I'm not, I'm stuck on this, you know? I just don't want to look at doing something that's going to create more harm type deal one way or the other, so.
Well, quite honestly, I don't think we should be in this position. They probably should have been dealt with before it got to us. But that being said, let's proceed with doing what we should do as it relates to this conditional use request and move forward. Joe?
Scott, are there other properties around Wichita similar to this?
Okay, we'll let Kelly take a stab at that one.
Sorry for interjecting myself, but I think I have an answer. Well, we had a case similar to this come before this board just in the last few years at 127th and 254 Highway up northeast part of, of the county, where we in fact had this similar argument and did bring that case forward because they were wanting to expand that field at that corner. And they did apply for a conditional use, and it was granted by this, by the, both the MAPC and the BLOCC.
Zion? All right. Seeing no more questions from the commission, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this item? Going once, going twice? We'll bring it back to the commission for discussion and recommendation. Jocelyn, Commissioner Clons?
I have a question for staff. On the recommended conditions of approved items two, three, four, five, and maybe six, seem like they only pertain to future drilling, which the applicant doesn't indicate he'd like to do. How does that affect the equipment that's already been set?
Yes, Brad Etherly, MAPD. Yeah, you know, these recommended conditions of approval were written up with the intention of this particular well being used. So I think that it would probably be considered for the future of, of this well, not, not kind of being done already. Does that make sense? And Scott?
I would just point out that the definition of oil and gas drilling, it, it encompasses a lot. So it encompasses activities where you're actively drilling. It also encompasses the activities where you're pumped, got a pump jack there and you're working on it. So these conditions, yes, while according to what the applicant has described today, they, some of them probably would not apply to them, though this land use would allow them to do additional drilling in the future. And should they choose to do that, these conditions would, would then apply to that circumstance.
Any other questions or comments? Does anyone care to make a motion?
I attempt to make a motion and we approve.
Okay.
Subject to all the conditions.
Again, because this is a denial of the staff's, staff is recommending denial, we have to prove alternative findings as part of our recommendation to approve. So we need to cite those. And since staff is pretty much saying three and four were the reasons for their denial, and the fact that it, the site has already been a drilling site that's developed with residential properties, and we have no opposition from the neighboring communities, I think that pretty much is the reason for the approval.
Precisely.
Commissioner Nix?
Don't we need to change the language in three, five, and six, where it says prior to commencing drilling activities? I mean, that probably ought to be stricken, shouldn't it, from each of those? I mean.
Did we have a second to your motion?
Yeah, I heard somebody.
Bob Dill did, okay. So does anyone want to include that, or is it necessary?
I mean, it seems to me that the statements should just begin with the applicant, the applicant, the applicant, and strike prior to commencing drilling. applicant, the applicant, and strike prior to commencing drilling. I mean, that doesn't make any sense.
On three, five, and six, oh, two, three, five, and six.
Yes, two, three, five, and six.
Is the applicant okay with that? Yes, we're looking at you.
Okay.
On the, on the staff recommended conditions on items two, three, five, and six, striking the prior to commencing activities.
Kirk Sponso, Deputy County Counselor, as an alternative, in order to address what staff said about this being ongoing process, or an alternative could be its tweak to say prior to commencing, prior to commencing or furthering drilling activities.
Come here.
I think we can use the word furthering.
Okay, so is the motion and the second in agreement? Is the applicant in agreement?
Yes.
Okay. All right, do we satisfy staff's concerns? All right.
And just for clarification, was Commissioner Johnson adopting the reasoning that was voiced by other, other members of the MAPC?
I heard he made an agreement.
You were, okay, thank you.
All right, all right, so we've milked this well dry. Couldn't help myself. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Couldn't help myself. Yeah, item four. You're welcome, thank you, sir. Item four point.
Thanks for the education.
Welcome, Justin.
Good afternoon, everybody. Justin Constantino with the Planning Department. Here to talk about daycares and residential zoning districts.
There you go.
Let's go to the next slide, please. So the recommended action this afternoon is to adopt the proposed amendments to the Unified Zoning Code regarding changes to the daycare, limited, and general land use. Next slide, please. Just a brief overview, I will discuss the definitions of daycare, limited, and general, to go over the differences between those two, discuss the current process as far as how those land uses are in the Unified Zoning Code, discuss potential, potential changes to the Unified Zoning Code, as well as reiterate the recommended action. Next slide, please. So as far as the existing code goes, we define daycare as both daycare general and daycare limited. I'll go into greater detail as to both of those definitions shortly, but I want to make the distinction that home occupation is, is the big difference between both general and limited as far as daycare is concerned. Next slide, please. So daycare general is not operated as a home occupation. Basically, what it is, is a daycare center that provides care, protection, and supervision for more than twelve individuals at any one time. Again, not operated as a home occupation, so when you're thinking of daycare general, think more of a, as a formal business. Next slide, please. Daycare limited is a home occupation. Again, it's a daycare center operated as a home occupation that provides care, protection, and supervision for no more than twelve individuals at any one time. Next slide, please. So just to define home occupation for the purposes of this discussion, it is a, it's intended to permit the establishment of certain incidental and accessory home occupations in residential and rural areas. Basically, a home occupation is there to allow somebody to operate a business in their home, but also ensure that that occupation does not adversely affect the integrity of the surrounding residential or rural areas. Next slide, please. Just to discuss our existing process and the way we currently handle the daycare general use, currently, the use requires a conditional use permit. It is permitted through a conditional use permit in SF five, SF ten, and SF twenty zoning districts, as well as the TF three-two family residential zoning district, RR rural residential, and other districts. Next slide, please. Prior amendments, the last time we kind of discussed daycare as a whole was back in twenty twenty-four, early twenty twenty-four. We discussed the daycare limited use and increased the maximum allowed children in a home occupation daycare per the UZC to match the maximum allowed by KDHE. So that was mostly a cleanup issue to change the maximum allowance from ten to twelve children, as I referenced earlier in the previous slide. Next slide, please. Possible and recommended changes to the Unified Zoning Code this afternoon, the daycare general use, it would be permitted in the single-family, two-family, and manufactured residential housing zoning districts through the establishment of an administrative permit process. Again, it's currently allowed through a conditional use process, but the big change that we're discussing this afternoon would be the establishment of an administrative permit process to allow these uses in residential neighborhoods. Next slide, please. As far as continued changes, basically, anytime someone wanted to submit an application, it would require, it would require an administrative permit or a conditional use when located in those residential zoning districts. The administrative permit application would require a written notification stating the nature of the proposed use, as well as a mailing to all property owners of land that abut and are contiguous to the application area. Next slide, please. The administrative permit would be subject to approval by the Planning Director. There would be a fourteen-day protest period if more than fifty percent of all owners of record of land which abut or are contiguous to the subject property file a written protest. The application would be subject to a public hearing through a conditional use process. If this process sounds familiar, it's because it's something that we currently do for short-term rentals when we went through that back in late twenty twenty-three. Next slide, please. Here's kind of an example of what that would look like. The orange property is, would be the subject property in this case. All of those properties in blue that are contiguous and abut that subject property would receive a notification. Next slide, please. The notification would go to all owners of record for the property. Next slide. Here's kind of another example of that. This was kind of a funkier layout that shows all those blue properties that would receive notification. Just just another example of what the protest property and short-term rental, excuse me, the daycare would look like. Next slide, please. Some feedback that we have received from advanced plans, this has gone to the Advanced Plans Committee, they did make a recommendation to move it forward to you all today. There was some discussion regarding daycare versus group home definitions. I'll go through those momentarily, just to discuss the difference between those two. Manufacturing and mobile homes clarification, as I mentioned before, this would be allowed as an administrative permit in the manufacturing, manufactured housing zoning districts. So I just wanted to discuss the differences between the MH zoning district and what a mobile home is. And then there was also some discussion about age limit as well. So I'll go into each of those briefly on the next slide, please. Again, daycare general, this was the definition that we showed before, more than twelve individuals, again, not operated as a home occupation. Next slide, please. This is a definition of a group home, very different from a daycare facility. Basically, it is not more than twelve, or excuse me, not more than ten persons, including eight or fewer persons with a disability. Essentially, a group home needs to be licensed. Also includes home plus adult care residences. So really, two different uses that we're discussing here between a group home and daycare, but a very relevant question that came up during the Advanced Plans Committee. Next slide, please. Another question that came up was the distinction between manufactured housing and mobile homes. I wanted to provide the definition of a mobile home. Essentially, it's a structure consisting of one or more mobile components manufactured to the standards embodied in the Federal Manufactured Home Construction and Safety Standards Act. It shall provide all the accommodations necessary to be a dwelling unit. It shall be connected to all utilities in conformance with applicable regulations. Mobile homes are not allowed in the MH, excuse me, are allowed in the MH zoning district. I just want to clarify that. And just to also clarify that the daycare general use as a stance today is currently allowed in the MH zoning district as a conditional use, so no changes there. Next slide, please. As far as age limitations go, this came up at the Advanced Plans meeting. There was a desire to add an age limit. Essentially, the way that Kansas State Statute defines childcare facility is a facility maintained by a person who has control or custody of one or more children under sixteen years of age. Let's go to the next slide, please. That language has been added to this as part of a revised update. Again, thanks to the Advanced Plans Committee for wading through that with us. So there is an age limitation recommended as part of these changes today that references that Kansas State Statute. Next slide, please. Here's where we're at in the process. As I mentioned before, this has been discussed a few times over at Advanced Plans. A lot of good work has been put into it by that committee currently today at MAPC. If you would approve this, it would go to the Wichita City Council, followed by the Board of County Commissioners. Next slide, please. And again, just to reiterate, the recommended action this afternoon is to adopt the proposed amendments to the UZC regarding changes to the daycare limited and general land use. That concludes my presentation and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Justin. Does anyone on the commission have questions for staff? Seeing none, I would just like to take a moment of privilege and recognize Council Member Tuttle, who's in the audience today. This has been one of her projects that she's championed for a couple of years now as a council member. We know that it's, childcare is a very desperate need in our community and allowing actions that will help improve that environment will certainly help the economy as well. So thank you for your work. With that, I make a motion that we approve the proposed amendments and recommended option by the council and Board of County Commissioners. A motion, yes, Mr. Wade. Oh, yeah, thank you. I should have asked if there was any public comment. Well, the council member might want to say something. See, you give her a chance and now here she comes. You have.
I know, I'm between you and leaving, so I'm very sorry. But I do just want to say, take a point of privilege and thank you for the opportunity. Right now in the city of Wichita, we are nearly reaching forty-one percent capacity of our childcare need. So, you know, if we need people to go to work and build planes and to teach kids and to be police officers or firefighters or architects or whatever it may be, we need to have safe, reliable, and affordable childcare. And this is just one more step in that, in that process. So thank you for your consideration. I appreciate it and thank you for the time.
Thank you. I'm not going to ask you for your name and address. We, we know who you are.
I live on the east side.
All right, so with public comment closed, bring it back. Motion, we had a second from John McKay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. It was, it was between the two, so it's awesome. And thank you. No, we have Miles and Blick missing, so it's well. All right, go ahead, Justin.
Good afternoon again, Sheriff Frye and Planning Commission, Justin Constantino with the Planning Department to talk about short-term rentals in the county. Next slide, please. Recommended action this afternoon is to adopt the proposed amendments to the Unified Zoning Code regarding short-term rentals in the county. Next slide, please. I will discuss the issue at hand, kind of the origination of where that came from, background, provide some definition regarding short-term rentals, discuss existing regulations, discuss proposed changes, and where we're at with the draft review and update process. So next slide, please. So the issue in this particular case is that it is not currently legal to operate a short-term rental in unincorporated Sedgwick County. The existing zoning code says that no stays are allowed under seven days. There have been short-term rentals in the county that have popped up, and that's what kind of prompted this issue, was the Board of County Commissioners tasked staff with looking at the Unified Zoning Code to make potential changes. So next slide, please. Again, context, this is a nationwide, global phenomenon, short-term rentals. Obviously, we've dealt with it at the city level with recent changes to the Unified Zoning Code back in September of twenty-three. We'll go to the next slide, please. Just a little bit of background, next slide, please. So back in November of twenty-three, the Sedgwick County Board of Commissioners held a staff meeting and received a presentation on short-term rentals in the unincorporated county. A few weeks later, we presented a research memo to the MAPC Advanced Plans Committee regarding this topic, including a state of the practice report. And then rounding out the year of twenty-three, the Sedgwick County Board of Commissioners adopted amendments that were previously adopted by the city of Wichita to the Unified Zoning Code regarding short-term rentals in the city. Next slide, please. In September of twenty-four, the BOCC held a staff meeting and received a staff presentation regarding updated findings by staff regarding the Unified Zoning Code changes and regarding short-term rentals in the county. October twenty-four, again, they received review, they reviewed draft changes, and then staff presented updated findings and potential, excuse me, possible changes to the UZC and comprehensive plan at the Advanced Plans Committee. And then rounding out twenty-four, staff presented updated findings and possible changes to the UZC at the Advanced Plans Committee. The Advanced Plans Committee voted five to one to recommend approval and move this item forward to the MAPC, which is why we're here this afternoon. Next slide, please. Short-term rental in the city, as defined in the Unified Zoning Code, means the use of a residential dwelling unit or structure to provide rooms for temporary lodging or lodging and meals for transient guests on a paying basis. So again, just to reiterate, this is the current definition in the UZC for city. Next slide, please. Short-term rental as defined in the Wichita, Sedgwick County Zoning Code, just so we're all on the same page, we're talking Airbnbs, VRBOs, those types of businesses. Next slide, please. Here's a couple of examples of what those would look like. Again, these aren't actual photos of county properties, but this is just a good example of what we're dealing with today. Next slide, please. Recommended Unified Zoning Code amendments, I'll go into those on the following slides. Next slide, please. Basically, what we're doing and what you see in front of you with those proposed changes to the zoning code is to add a new dish, new, new definition for short-term rentals in the county. The short-term rental in the county shall always require an administrative permit or a conditional use, and it would be valid for a period of five years. So the administrative permit or conditional use must be renewed every five years. Next slide, please. It would only be permitted in residential dwelling units and permitted accessory apartments. Short-term rentals in the county may be permitted as either a primary use or as an accessory use, and it would not be permitted in any recreational vehicle. Next slide, please. Continued with recommendations in the Unified Zoning Code, an owner, operator, or property manager must be designated for the short-term rental, and they should live within thirty miles. They should be generally available twenty-four hours per day, seven days a week, and post their contact information in a conspicuous and accessible location within the unit itself. Next slide, please. No gathering of more than twenty adults, note above twenty adults, they can apply for a conditional use permit. Any short-term rental in the county is subject to inspection by the zoning administrator or designee, and it includes the fire chief or their designee with Sedgwick County Fire District. Next slide, please. Continued recommended actions, the use of the STR in the county is limited to activities that are incidental, customary, and accessory to a residential dwelling unit. They should have weekly residential trash, trash service and must be in compliance at all times with all zoning laws. Next slide, please. This is what the process would look like. An applicant would submit an application, they would submit notification, they would submit a notification list, we would send out notification letters to contiguous and abutting property owners on their behalf with a fourteen-day protest period. If more than fifty percent of those owners abutting and contiguous are opposed, then it would turn into a conditional use process. Next slide, please. Here's an example, similar to the last presentation I gave regarding daycares, but the orange property would be the subject property, the blue properties would be the ones receiving the notifications. Next slide, please. Here's a further example of what that would look like for a property in the county. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Same goes for this slide, again, kind of a unique property layout. Anything in blue would be notified regarding the property in orange. Next slide, please. Again, another funky layout, but I think you're getting the picture. Next slide. As far as who would receive that notification letter, all owners of record for a property would be the individuals that receive it. So it would go not to the property, but to the the property address on record. Next slide, please. There was some discussion at the B O C C regarding how we would monitor this. We currently monitor it through software in the city. At the county level, we had some discussions about the monitoring process. We also had discussions about complaints and the five year cycle of applications and related application fees. Next slide, please. Feedback, let's go to the next slide, please. This is feedback received from the Board of County Commissioners at the meeting in October of 24. Again, this was, this whole process began due to them asking the planning department to come up with a solution and potentially make changes to the Unified Zoning Code. There was a desire to act on this based on supply and demand. There was a few questions that popped up regarding taxation and fairness, as well as questions about whether or not these Airbnb should be registered businesses. But for the sake of our discussion today, we are discussing changes to the Unified Zoning Code as it relates to the land use of short term rentals in the county. Next slide, please. Draft review and update process, next slide. Again, this has been discussed at several B O C C staff meetings. The M A P C Advanced Plans Committee did discuss this as well. Here we are at M A P C. The next step would be to take this to the Board of County Commissioners if it were approved this afternoon, followed by the Wichita City Council. Next slide, please. Just to reiterate, the recommended action is to adopt the proposed amendments to the U Z C regarding short term rentals in the county, and I'm available for any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Does anyone on the commission have questions for staff? Seeing none, is there anyone in the public still present? Seeing none, bring it back to the commission for consideration and action. Commissioner Warren.
Please take the recommended action.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Warren and a second by Commissioner McKay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item. I think we're staying with Justin again, aren't we?
Hello again. Happy to discuss comprehensive plan. So what we're here to discuss this afternoon is the annual review of the comprehensive plan. Next slide, please. The recommended action is to review and potentially make changes to the comprehensive plan. Next slide. Little bit of background, our current comprehensive plan, the Community Investments Plan, was adopted by the Wichita City Council back in December of 2015. It was adopted by the Board of County Commissioners one month later in January of 2016. In June of 2019, the Places for People Plan was adopted as an amendment to the existing comprehensive plan by the Wichita City Council, and then shortly followed up by the Board of County Commissioners in June of 2019. Next slide, please. Per Kansas State statute, and this is why we're here this afternoon, at least once each year, the Planning Commission shall review or reconsider the comprehensive plan or any part thereof. This is an opportunity to propose amendments, extensions, or additions to the existing plan. I just want to reiterate that what we're doing here today is for the 2024 calendar year. So this is something that we wanted to get to towards the tail end of last year. We didn't have an opportunity to do that, so we wanted to bring it to you in the first quarter of 2025. There will be another opportunity to discuss this again later on in 2025. So if something strikes you, or if there's something that you would like to change about the comprehensive plan, just know that today there will be another opportunity to do it in the in the near future. So again, staff is requesting that you all review the existing comprehensive plan, determine if there's any changes, updates, or additions to the plan that should be considered this afternoon. Next slide, please. Further background, in October of 2024, the Planning Department released an R F P for consultants to provide professional services to review and produce amendments to the existing Community Investments Plan. That included locational guidelines, the 2035 Future Growth Concept Map, as well as the urban growth areas. That is somewhat separate, but still relevant to our discussion today. We gave a briefing to the advanced plans committee this morning about that comprehensive plan update. So again, today, what we're tasked with is just kind of a check in to see if there's anything that you have concerns with or any changes that you'd potentially like to make to the comprehensive plan. Next slide, please. The M A P D has finalized an agreement with P E C. That's the consultant firm that will be that will be working with beginning first quarter of 2025. We've had a pre application, excuse me, pre kickoff meeting with them, so we will be working on those updates to those maps, future growth areas, and locational guidelines soon. Next slide, please. Again, recommended action, just to review and potentially make changes to the comprehensive plan. I'm available for any questions.
Justin, does everyone have a link to the plan?
Yes, we did provide a link at the bottom of your staff report. I would encourage you to check in on the comprehensive plan from time to time. Obviously, you are all familiar with the.
You also email that link to everyone?
Certainly.
Just so we can have it, because obviously, I don't know that everyone's had a chance to review it or fully enjoy it again since last year. So this would be an opportunity. Huh? So maybe by next meeting, we could put a placeholder on here to have any other comments or any recommendations at the next meeting. So that's your homework assignment. Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
With that, that brings our agenda to a close. A reminder that our next meeting is February 27. We are adjourned.